Good evening, everybody, and welcome to your 2022 Annual Town Meeting. My name is Paul Samino, your town moderator, and I have been informed by our town clerk that a quorum of 100 registered voters is now present, and therefore this annual town meeting will come to order. As your moderator, I am responsible for the conduct of this meeting. I am pleased to see you all here this evening, especially those that are attending town meeting for the first time. Indeed, if you are a first-time town meeting attendee and you decide to come to a microphone at some point tonight, please let us know it's your first time so that we can give you the sincere recognition you deserve. Today, I will do my best to honor everyone's commitment to our town's governance by proceeding along as fairly and efficiently as possible. Now, if you would please rise as Girl Scouts from our local troops post the colors and remain standing as they lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. From Troop 65266, we have Jasmine Arroyo, Troop 62248, Charlotte Burke, Yardley Taylor, and Mila Nguyen. So we got names, and we have all of you standing. I just don't see any Girl Scouts. And they were here just minutes ago. Do we, are they out in the lobby? They're coming. Hopefully, this is our only hiccup for tonight.
We'll be announcing everything for us. Attention, please. Color Guard, advance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please sing the National Anthem.
Oh, say, can you see by the dawn's early light What so proudly we hailed At the twilight's last gleaming Whose broad stripes and bright stars Through the perilous fight All the red parts we washed Were so gallantly streaming And the rocket's red glare, the bombs bursting in air Gave proof through the night That our flag was still there Oh, say, does that star-spangled banner yet wave O'er the land of the free And the home of the brave?
Color Guard, post the colors.
Thank you very much to these young ladies. Like I have observed with every town meeting, I have moderated, your Select Board, Advisory Committee, Town Administrator, Town Council, and their respective teams have performed admirably on our behalf to put written materials and recommendations before you today. Others have as well, and I hope everybody was able to pick up the many informational handouts available on the tables as you checked in today. Meanwhile, like in 2020 and 2021, tremendous consideration for your safety underpins today's meeting. Our Board of Health has advised that no particular COVID-related restrictions need apply tonight, but for those of you seeking extra caution, we do have a section of the auditorium set aside for you, which is the one-third of the seats to my left and the back half of that one-third. It's marked off by caution tape and some red signs. So folks who would like to social distance or, you know, otherwise have an enhanced safety protocol, that's the place for you, if you so desire. Obviously, in terms of the logistics for getting all of this set up, the credit goes again to our town clerk, Jim Hegarty, and his team. Yes, absolutely. On behalf of Southborough Youth and Family Services, a quick reminder that May is National Health Awareness Month, Mental Health Awareness Month, and this Friday, May 6th, all residents and community members are encouraged to wear green to show your support and advocacy for those impacted by mental health conditions and for decreasing the stigma of mental health issues. Youth and Family Services staff are here tonight handing out green bags with information about mental health support services and are available for any questions you may have. For the purpose of counting standing votes as needed tonight, we will eventually swear eight tellers, and they have been appointed and are sworn by the clerk, and they are Roger Challen, Al Hamilton, Tracy Navaroli, Michelle Pelechi, Ann Shea, Brian Shea, Lisa Tominey, and Brian Van La Hoven. I thank them for their service. In New England, a town meeting serves as the legislative branch of the town government. The town meeting decides whether to appropriate money to run the town and considers whether to create, revise, or remove local town statutes known as bylaws. Here in Southborough, we operate by open town meeting, meaning that any registered voter in attendance can participate and vote on all matters before us tonight. A warrant is issued in advance of town meeting for voters to be forewarned about the time, place, and substance of the matters to be considered. The warrant before us tonight is a cream-colored document, and in it you will find a total of 35 articles to be considered tonight. But as I mentioned earlier, my goal is to proceed through each article as efficiently as possible, and we will employ our now-not-so-new consent process to greatly reduce that number, I hope. Nevertheless, there's always a good possibility we will not dispose of the entire warrant tonight, and therefore our schedule is as follows. This first session runs from now until 11:00 p.m., and then, if necessary, we will reconvene tomorrow night right here at 6:30 p.m. to finish things up. In keeping with our longstanding town practice, each session continues until either the scheduled end of the session, or the article that's under consideration at that time is completed, or a quorum is called and fails, or a motion for adjournment is passed by a majority. As always, unless otherwise determined by statute or town bylaw, the conduct of our town meeting is governed by the rules and practices contained in the latest edition of Town Meeting Time and Chapter 41 of our Town Code. Our past practice has been to allow non-voters that we approve into our assembly. Typically, these people are non-resident town employees, members of the press, students from government classes, and the like. All non-voters must wear the red and blue wristbands with white stars issued by the clerk and will not be allowed to speak unless approved by me or the Assembly. The non-voters present today are Heather Alker, Public Health Director, Dakota Antelman, Community Advocate, Jasmine Arroyo, Girl Scout, Brian Ballantyne, Town Treasurer, Amy Berry, Assistant Town Clerk, Charlotte Burke, Girl Scout, Paul Sibelli, Town Assessor, An Tu Dong, Girl Scouts, Melissa Danza, Conservation Agent, Trevor Dillman, Southborough Access Media, Ryan Donovan, Library Director, Joan Frank, Regional School Committee, Karen Galligan, DBW Director, Vanessa Hale, Assistant Town Administrator, Keith Lavoy, Assistant Superintendent of Schools, Pamela Francois, Senior Center Director, Lori Lovoli, Building Commissioner, Greg Martineau, Superintendent of Schools, Carla McAuliffe, Town Accountant, Jay Montillo, IT Manager, Marika Munsif, EDC Coordinator, Ryan Newell, from the Southborough Police Department, Terry Newman, Southborough Access Media, Mila Nguyen, Girl Scouts, John Parent, Facilities Director, Rebecca Pellegrino, Regional School Committee Director of Finance, Mark Purple, Town Administrator, Karina Quinn, Town Planner, Stephanie Reinhorn, Assistant Superintendent of Schools, Carol Saunders, Girl Scouts, Colleen Stansfield, Planning Department Business Analyst, Jay Tallerman, Town Council, Taylor Yardley, Girl Scouts, Kathy Herval, from Gale Associates, Terry Underwood, Southborough Access Media, and Ernie Hool, Assabett Valley Superintendent. If there are no objections, we welcome these people here today. Do I have the consent of the hall? Please raise your cards. That carries. Our bylaw requires me to define the bounds of the Assembly tonight. All of the seats in the auditorium and the aisles in front of the rear half-wall are considered the hall, and all voters must be within these bounds to have their vote counted. You'll note that today's voters have been issued a solid red wristband and a red voter card. Tomorrow, both of those things will be green. Briefly, on the topic of conduct and decorum, I think all of us expect that we are, ladies and gentlemen, in our town generally and certainly in a setting like this. So first, please silence your mobile devices now, if you haven't already, and remember that nobody is permitted to place or take calls within the bounds of the Assembly. If you must place or take a call, you need to leave and do so only in the parking lot. Thank you for that. The Annual Town Report is available at the tables in the lobby today, and on page seven, you can find a list of the 48 individuals that our community lost in 2021. Included in that list is the subject of the dedication just preceding it on page five, Paul Berry, who served our town for decades as town clerk. In addition, this past weekend, we sadly lost probationary firefighter Lisa Marie Thompson. Firefighter Thompson was a full-time member of our department since November of 2021, and in that short time, she demonstrated a sincere commitment to her fellow firefighters, to the department, and to all of us whom she served. Please join me now in a moment of silence to remember Paul Berry and Lisa Thompson and all of our other departed neighbors. Thank you very much. Last, and certainly not least in this category, it is with a still-heavy heart that I acknowledge the passing of Russell Millholland on February 28th of this year. Russ was a longtime member of our community and highly valued contributor to our town government as both a member of the Planning and Personnel Boards for decades, as well as an independent advisor of our townhouse staff. At this time, I invite longtime Chair of the Personnel Board, Dr. Steve Morielli, to give us a short impression of Russ. Thank you, Steve.
Thank you. Mr. Moderator, my fellow citizens of Southborough, I'm here to remember the life and unselfish service of our friend Russell Millholland. I consider Russ to have been a friend, and I'm honored to speak in his memory. Russ was a native of Wallfam, Massachusetts, and a fellow U.S. Army veteran. He earned his bachelor's and his master's degree from Suffolk University in Boston. Russ moved to Southborough many decades ago with his wife Janice and adopted Southborough as his new home. This is where they raised their two boys, John and Peter. For more than 40 years, Russ served on boards and committees, unselfishly sharing his expertise on business, finance, and personnel. Russ served on the Personnel Board in Southborough for more than two decades. Our town moderator, Paul Samino, and I were honored to have served with Russ and learned a great deal from him, but Russ also served on a number of other town boards, which included the Cable Committee, the Advisory Committee, the Planning Board, the Industrial Development Commission, and the Southborough Council on Aging. In addition, over the years, Russ volunteered to serve or chair search committees and interview panels for the Town Administrator twice, the Town Planner four times, I guess we had some problems keeping that, the Town Accountant twice, the Treasurer Collector, the Police Chief twice, the Fire Chief twice, and served and assisted on at least a dozen other Assistant Department Head and Administrative Assistant job searches. For 34 years, Russ was a Human Resource Executive for the Norton Company, now Saint Cobain. Russ was always willing to pitch in, to offer counsel to department heads and middle managers across town departments. He conducted leadership and communication training regularly. Because he was an executive coach, his guidance helped so many within our town. He served as our town's first sexual harassment officer, which, again, is a volunteer position. Russ worked on the Pay Classification Study, the Personnel Administration Plan, and encouraged both the police and fire departments through the process of creating performance appraisals for the first time. The most important question that Russ posed, whether in a performance review discussion, mentoring staff, or organizational planning, was, what are we doing well? What could we do to improve, and what should we start or stop doing? And I must remember that conversations with Russ often ended, so what can I do for you? Russ, as you see here, was a stalwart, volunteer, like so many other volunteers to the town of Southborough, donated an extraordinary number of hours to our town. We will be forever grateful for his service, and his work has clearly left an indelible mark on our town. Ladies and gentlemen, tonight, we remember and honor a dedicated servant, a man with quiet competence and exceptional leadership. Russ will be missed greatly by those who worked with him and those who considered Russ a friend. Here's to Russ. Thank you.
Russ's wife, Jan, is watching us all tonight, and although Russ wouldn't like a moment of silence for his loss, he might have been okay with a round of applause.
Yeah.
Thank all of you. Lastly, before we get started tonight, we would be remiss if we did not acknowledge that one of our longest-serving members of our town government is stepping down this month after over 40 years of service. And of course, I'm speaking about Planning Board Chair, Don Morris, who was appointed to the Planning Board in 1980 and subsequently ran in eight consecutive successful five-year elections and has served us all magnificently in that role. For my part, I have always encouraged anyone who needed an example of how to run a perfect public meeting to watch Don in action. He was equally respectful to his fellow board members, the proponents who came before his board, as well as the impacted neighbors at large. If the Planning Board members would please come up. Where is Andrew Mills? I thought you'd be closer. Mr. Mills.
So, thank you. Appreciate it, Mr. Moderator. So, Don.
Front and center.
Thank you. As Mr. Samino pointed out, Don has served on the Planning Board for over 41 years. The elected Planning Board was created in 1943. That was 79 years ago. So Don has been on the Planning Board more than half the time the Planning Board as an elected official has been in place. He's like an encyclopedia of Southborough planning history and knowledge. He has served for over half the elected Planning Board's existence. Don's famous for saying to the Planning Board members, applicants, and Southborough residents, "The Planning Board and department is going to do it right," when it came to finalizing projects. This often resulted in extra hours of meetings, a letter to Town Council for clarification, or additional meetings for the public to review draft decisions. So we got it right. Don won't take credit for a lot of the features that we love and enjoy and take for granted around town. However, he was a major driving force in preserving the rural and quaint charm of Southborough while growing, while it was growing significantly through his tenure in town. Tree City, USA, one thing, historical roads designation that we'll see later, hopefully this evening, zoning rules to protect the rural characteristics and to support business growth here in town or in Southborough, protective zoning vision for development options throughout Southborough, historic, and lot sizes. Don's leadership of the Planning Board has been witnessed by probably everyone in this room and watching on TV, whether it was his calm demeanor or partnering with applicants and the townspeople, or direct questions. He was always successful in ensuring the Town Code was followed and finding common ground for the project's advancement. Thank you, Don, for your service to the town of Southborough, for your countless hours on the Planning Board, for your excellent leadership as Chairman of the Planning Board, and you are truly a model for all on how to serve a community. Don, you did it right. Thank you. So, as a token of our appreciation on the Planning Board, we got Don a little gift. We feel that he wore out the gavel that he used and the block, so we are giving him the gavel that he has used over the last however many decades with a little presentation box, and that's the original block as well. The Planning Board purchased a new one that we will use going forward, but we wanted a little thank you, Don. Appreciate it, and this will be probably one of many recognitions for you to come, but thank you again. Appreciate it, Mr. Moderator.
One more quick one. Don, one more quick one.
My name is Charles Gaffney. I served on the Planning Board for 26 years, 23 years chairman. I'm here to recognize Don Morris for his 43 years of service to the Planning Board and community. The amount of time that he spent was immense. We used to meet till midnight every week. The growth in the community was such that in Don's time, the population doubled in Southborough. The patience that he showed with our meetings was appreciated and always calm. I'd like to share one short story. In a neighboring town I drove by recently, viewing the construction of new homes, I was surprised to see they looked like they were three feet apart. In our times, one developer came to us, may he rest in peace, described that he wanted to build a new subdivision and call it Rolex. Don in no way wanted us to even consider that. Today, it's called Presidential Estates, quite a difference from what I have seen in the abutting town in currently new homes. There were so many more stories, but not enough time. I just want to thank you for listening, and please join me in recognizing Mr. Morris for his lengthy public service.
Thank you, Don.
Thank you all very much. I'm overwhelmed. The Planning Board always huddled together and shared information up until tonight. Charles Gaffney, I learned so much from him while he was the Chair, and all of, really all of the people that I've served with, I really learned a lot from. I was guided by the first Chairman of the Planning Board when I had my first Planning Board meeting, Jim Denman. Many of you know Jim from his work, not only on the Planning Board, but with the Assabett School. I went to the first meeting, and it was way over my head. I had no idea what they were talking about. So after the meeting, Mr. Denman said to me, "So, Don, what do you think?" And I said, "Well, I don't understand half the terms. I don't know why I'm here. I don't know what I'm doing." And he said, "Don't worry about it." So for the next 41 years, I didn't know what I was doing, and I never worried about it. Excellent advice. Thank you all very much.
Okay, finally, thank you, Don. Finally, a few notes about our parliamentary process today. All presentations today will be made from the podium across the stage to my left, and as we go through the warrant, motions and other pertinent information about each article will be posted on the screen. Jay, can we just put up a quick example of a motion? Can you jump to some? Yeah, can you blow that up? All the way so that people in the back can see it. So you'll see the article number, who proposes it, what vote quantum is required, what the motion itself is, and then the recommendations of the Select Board and the Advisory Committee as we go through. Thanks, Jay. As is customary, your town clerk, Jim Hegarty, and town council, Jay Tallerman, are on stage with me tonight, while your Select Board chaired by Lisa Braccio and your Advisory Committee chaired by Kathy Cook are all sitting in the front. Well, all of us up here, with the exception of Town Council, are registered voters like you, but nevertheless, I think it good to always remind us that the primary, most prominent function of town meeting does not occur up here in front, but rather it occurs out there through your questions, debates, and votes. Thus, as we proceed through the warrant today, any town meeting member can go to any of the microphones, first state their name and address, and then speak to the current motion or ask a question. Any town official wishing to join the debate will wait in the queue to speak to a motion, as does any other voter. All questions should be directed through me. No one may speak until recognized that a microphone by me, and this includes calls to move a question. The only exceptions to being recognized by me are a question of privilege or a point of order. If you wish to raise a point of order, you still must rise and be recognized, and if someone moves a question, I will determine whether there has been adequate discussion and may forestall it for the time being. Please note that the position of the Advisory Committee and Select Board, as I said, are shown on the video screen for that article. If you want to hear more about those numbers, for example, if they're not unanimous, please feel free to ask a question about that. When we proceed to actually vote, I will remind you again of the quantum of vote necessary to pass each article, each proposal, whether it's a simple majority, two-thirds, et cetera, and then I'll call for the vote. If I can determine the prevailing vote from here, I will announce it, including declaring a two-thirds majority. If at least seven voters rise to question my assessment of any vote, or if I deem a vote too close to call, I will ask the tellers to come forward to count the individual votes. With that, I have examined the call of the town meeting, the receipt of the officer's return of service for the posting, and the return of service for the posting, and the return of the mailing. Under our rules, the moderator must read the entire warrant, either at the beginning of the meeting or prior to the motion introducing each article, unless a motion is made to dispense with that reading. Therefore, do I have a motion to dispense with the reading of the call of the meeting and the officer's return of service and to waive the reading of the separate articles of the warrant? Does it have a second? All in favor? Motion carries. All right, so now we'll get into the warrant. And to start that review, we conduct what is called the consent part of this town meeting. I hope most of you were able to pick up and read my pink-colored handout on your way into the hall today. It is a single front and back sheet of paper with the title Consent List for Enactment under Bylaw Section 41-6(c). If you weren't able to pick one up, don't worry, I will explain everything. Under our bylaw, as moderator, I may propose to you a grouping of warrant articles to be considered together as a block, so that articles that are considered routine may be voted at one time, saving us considerable time for other matters on the warrant. It is important to note that as the moderator, I only propose the list, but the assembly must approve it. Therefore, before I ask for the summary vote, I will go through the lists quickly, one by one, and if any voter wishes to hold any of the items on that list, simply say so, and then that article will be removed from the group and taken up with the rest of the warrant as usual. So on the pink sheet, there's an explanation on one side, and on the back is a list of the specific articles that I am proposing to group together tonight. Again, after we go through the list, whatever remains in that group will be voted as a single package. Hopefully, that is all clear, but let me stop right here and see if there's any questions out there at all about this process. Seeing none. A couple of additional important points. The sponsors of each of the articles on the list have consented to have their article on the list. Nobody is being forced to be on the list. Our bylaw that allows for this process implies that we are taking these articles out of the original order of the warrant, as we obviously are doing. And again, if you have any doubt about whether an article should be on the list, please hold the article. All right, I will step through it very quickly and just shout out "hold" for anything that you may wish to hold. Article one to hear reports. Article two, acceptance of donations. Article three, short-term borrowing. Article four, contracts for services. Article eight, I'm sorry, Article six, rescind public safety facility borrowing. Article eight, FY '22 water budget. Article eleven, OPEB. Article twelve, transfer of sidewalk funds. Article fourteen, capital lease payments. Article seventeen, insurance deductibles. Article eighteen, retiree leave payments. Article nineteen, maintenance fund. Article twenty, revolving funds. Article twenty-one, CPA administrative article. Article twenty-two, '84 Main Street bond. We'll hold Article twenty-two. Article twenty-three, library facade bond. And Article thirty, rules, adoption procedure. All right, I heard one "hold," correct me if I'm wrong, but I heard one "hold" for Article twenty-two, so we will take that up as we go through the rest of the warrant in order. As to the remaining articles on my list, passage of this requires a majority vote, so all in favor, please raise your cards. All opposed? Motion carries unanimously, and so now we move to reports under Article one. First up is the library and the library director, Ryan Donovan. We will move through these as quickly as possible. A lot is new from the last few years, obviously, because we are, we're not in need to artificially rush things due to COVID for the first time in a long time. Go ahead, Ryan.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I'll go quick, I promise. Hello, I am Ryan Donovan, Director of the Southborough Library. I am here to provide a brief update on what's been happening at the library. Oh, here we go. I would like to thank the entire Southborough community for the patience and usage of the library during the COVID-19 pandemic. We had thousands of users take advantage of remote electronic resources and curbside pickup services. I am happy to report that the library has been able to reopen for normal hours of operation over the last year. We are open on Monday, Friday, and Saturdays from 10:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m., and Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday from 10:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m. Please come in, visit us, and check out your next favorite book. I am happy to report that the library is just as busy as ever. We continue to process new materials for residents and circulated over 110,000 items in the last year. Patrons continue to enjoy a variety of library programs over Zoom and in person. Look for a new Learn to Knit program coming this summer. In the last year and a half, the library was able to restore the library's historic facade. We would like to thank the Southborough Community Preservation Committee for supporting this project and helping to celebrate over 110 years of rich and diverse history of the town's current library site. During the early days of the pandemic, the library's assistant director, Kim Ivors, had an idea to create a story walk on the grounds outside. What is a story walk, you might ask? It's an outdoor exhibit featuring all the pages of a children's picture book. A story walk offers the ability to read a book at the library 24 hours a day, seven days a week. We would like to thank the Southborough Community Fund, a fund of the foundation for Metro West, for providing the funds to bring this popular story walk exhibit to the community. In my very first library board of trustees meeting in 2014, we discussed a new carpet for the library's main floor upstairs. Thanks to the assistance of the town's facilities department, we have a new carpet, and it looks great. A big thank you to the entire library staff, library trustees, and several volunteers who had to move every single book in the library's adult collection to achieve completion of this project. The Southborough Library has expanded internet services to patrons by participating in the Massachusetts Board of Library Commissioners Circulating Hotspot Program. At present, we have five circulating hotspots that can be offered to community members for a checkout period of three weeks at a time. Thank you to the 231 users that filled out the library's space and services survey. We learned that a lot of you have library cards, most of you have great ideas for new and continued library programs, a majority of you support a future library renovation, and almost 80% are in favor of continuing the hotspot program. As we look ahead to the next several months, we hope that many of you will be able to join the library for our annual summer reading initiative. There are a lot of great events lined up, including brand-new programs for teens like resume-writing workshops and anxiety-reducing decompression sessions during finals. There will also be a week-long comics academy for younger kids, where they will learn the steps and skills to create their own comic book. The Peggy Tuttle Award for Library Service Distinction is named in honor of library staff member Peggy Tuttle, who contributed over 30 years of public service to the town. This year's recipient is a former library trustee and a member of the advisory committee. In the words of former selectman John Rooney, quote, "I had the privilege of working for a number of years with her on advisory. The passion and commitment she brought to the table was unconditional and transparent. People volunteer to be on town committees for a variety of reasons. She did it because she genuinely loves this town and constantly strives to make it a better place to live. She always based her committee votes and decisions on a simple litmus test, namely the best interests of the town. I truly believe she should be receiving this award, not because just of her service to the library, but rather based on her unwavering commitment and dedication to every resident in town." Please join me in congratulating the 2022 Peggy Tuttle Award winner, Judy Butts.
Next is the Municipal Technology Committee, Ms. Varner, and on deck is the Master Plan In fact, whoever's on deck, feel free to walk down now, and you'll be in the front
Hello, everyone. My name is Angela Varner. I'm a 17-year resident of Southborough and a member of the Town's Technology Committee. Some of you may not realize that our town actually has a technology committee. Well, the MTC was created in 2017 to recognize the growing role that technology plays for our town, our citizens, and our town employees. Our focus has been on creating and updating a five-year strategic technology plan. We also recommend technology and review technology investments. We believe in a data-driven approach. Last year, we created the first town-wide survey to collect residents' feedback, and this runs annually to help us prioritize focus areas and projects. We work closely with our town's IT manager, Jason, and also with other town committees and boards to resolve technology issues, propose projects, and generally help Southborough improve our technology services. These listed projects are examples of the progress that we've seen in the last year. And while not exhaustive, they demonstrate the type of work being done by our town IT manager and the MTC. Please continue to fill out the annual survey and encourage others to do the same. Our monthly meeting is also posted on the town website, and anyone is welcome to attend. We also have brochures and papers with QR codes on the tables outside with links to all of our relevant presentations as well as survey results. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Master Plan. On deck is the Regional School Committee.
Good evening. I'm Mimi Luttrell, a member of your planning board and the chair of the Master Plan Committee. I last reported to town meeting in 2019 that the Master Plan Committee was beginning the process of updating the 2008 master plan. A master plan provides the basis for future decision-making in town. Today, I am here to happily announce the final draft of the version of the 2021 master plan is available for review and comment. The 2021 final draft can be accessed via the QR code that's available in the entry hall and on the master plan webpage on the town website. Comments may be emailed to mpc@southboroughma.com. We received many fabulous pictures to incorporate in the 2021 master plan, and although the version currently available does not include those beautiful pictures, they will be incorporated in the next couple of weeks. And thank you so much to all of those who sent in pictures. Unlike previous master plans, which were written by consultants and cost a considerable amount, except for a small grant to get us started, the 2021 master plan was entirely written by the dedicated town resident volunteers on the Master Plan Committee. The Master Plan Committee was made up of members of 16 different town entities and members at large. The names of those who worked to deliver this plan can be found in Appendix A of the plan. I would have loved to read everyone's name, but I only have three minutes. I thank all the Master Plan Committee members for their dedication and hard work. It was a truly collaborative effort, and this is a uniquely Southborough plan. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Luttrell. Regional School Committee, and last on deck, Advisory.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. My name is Paul Desmond. I am chair of the Regional School Committee, at least for another couple of weeks. And of course, the Regional School Committee is responsible for this lovely building we're in, Algonquin Regional High School. And I'm here to introduce a non-resident, Kathy Herble, of Gale Associates, which is a consulting and engineering firm that's helping us develop a plan for some sorely needed upgrades to the athletic fields and the tennis courts here at the high school. So this is just an informational session at this point to alert the community to the issue, hopefully well in advance of an article that we expect to present at a future town meeting. Kathy?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, citizens of Southborough. Appreciate being here. I'm excited to tell you about this program we've got going here, going at the high school, and hope we can see it through fruition. I have quite a bit to try to cover. I've got seven minutes, so I'm going to try to talk fast. This was a master plan that was developed, started, I think, back in 2013, the school trying to decide what we need, what's the best for the high school, and this master plan was developed, wrapped up in 2020, which involved a turf, new turf field, multipurpose field, and new track at the high school, a turf JV practice field, as well as new tennis courts. What's been done today in addition since the master plan is we've gone through and done a thorough evaluation of the existing facilities. We've done a survey of the existing conditions. We've conducted geotechnical services for foundation designs, things along those lines, to see what we're dealing with. Based on all that information, we've put together schematic design plans and assisted the school with coming up with a thorough schematic cost estimate that they can start working with, as well as advancing some of the electrical design. This is just a quick aerial of the area that we're talking of today. Just starting, quick history, existing conditions. The track was built in 1994. Your average track usually lasts about 18 years. This one's pushing 28. It has severe patching, uneven surfaces. You can see from the pictures, holds water. It's definitely reaching its end of its useful life. The existing grass field is in similar condition, over-usage by numerous sports, athletics, compact the topsoil, grass doesn't grow, you develop rough spots, ruts, and again, injuries, things and such develop. We have very similar circumstances at the JV field, just again, overuse, wear and tear on the turf, and just the grass doesn't grow anymore because it's so overused. Tennis courts have severe cracking. They break through down to their base pavement. As you can see, this can be a tripping hazard. And again, the courts were done back in 2004, and you're looking at 18 years old. So this is just a quick slide with some statistics on the safety issues, uneven surfaces, slippage, concussion, things that, grass versus turf, in most cases, turf fields are just as safe, if not better, and particularly with concussions, things along those lines, and steps that are taken, GMX testing, as well as shock pad, which provides an extra layer of safety under the fields. This gives you a sense, this is developed by the athletic department, just the amount of usage, just used by the high school. The hope is that these fields will all be able to be used by the entire community as well. But just you can see the numbers and the number of teams that they put on these fields in the fall and in the spring. So why a turf field? Well, the biggest thing is it allows you to use the field. You could use it 24/7 with lights, but it gives the school and the community the two to three times the capacity for sports games, youth groups, the high school, and such. The biggest thing, too, is you can use them no matter what the weather. If it's wet, they're designed to be safe to get the water off, but also reduces cancellations, trying to reschedule, all that hassle in the spring when you have a rainy baseball season, and they're trying to make up six games in two weeks. These are just examples of what the fields could look like. These are some track and fields that Gale has worked on. The Wheeler School up in the corner could be what the JV field would look, very similar to something along those lines. This is for people not familiar with turf section. We start with a stone base that provides that adequate drainage, which allows the water to get off the field so it can be used in the rain and such. The shock pad is the layer from the second layer down. Again, that's a cushioning material. Again, that's a cushioning material that goes under the field to provide a softer surface for play. And then the top part is your fibers. It's kind of the grassy blade part and the infill that goes within those blades. Keep in mind, the school is committed to using alternate infill and not crumb rubber. This is just a quick example of our existing conditions plan that we did, the elevations, the surface, all the existing conditions that are out there. We do this so that we identify any issues, you know, what utilities we've got to work around, grades, things along those lines. So this is the schematic design for the stadium field includes a new turf field, as I said, multipurpose with inside the track. The track, being that it's in such poor condition, we're proposing that it be completely redone. We're going to pulverize it and then reclaim the old paving to save costs. We're also going to increase the radius on the track so that it gives you more area of field play to provide larger safety runouts along the side of the field before an athlete running on the field would, you know, go onto the track surface. We also are including grandstands, improvements to the lights, and some upgrades to the other track facilities. All the fields are in accordance with the MIAA and the National Federal High School Association. We'll be also improving all ADA access at the site. There'll be new scoreboards, improved drainage and such, safety netting and fencing. The JV field, very similar, multipurpose, can be used by numerous sports. Again, improved ADA access to the field, athletic lighting, some portable bleachers, scoreboard, and also the school is, we're looking at doing an amphitheater in the vicinity of these fields that the location hasn't been decided, but just to bring something for more of a community use, outdoor concerts and such. And then the tennis courts, replacing the existing nine tennis courts as in place. But again, with the paving as aged as it is, we proposed pulverization, reclaiming the paving, doing new servicing, improve the drainage, and redoing the fencing. This is just a quick on the electrical. We're trying to incorporate service. The high school has plenty of power. We don't need to bring any additional power, but we will run it from the high school out to the concession building. Most people call it the McDonald Building. Just so you know, we're planning for that service to provide any future, potential future uses of lighting and such. Perhaps the tennis courts may someday may be lit, as well as the baseball field. Again, just the electrical plans. This just gives you an example of some of the ideas we've kicked around and for cost purposes, what the amphitheater might look like, as I said, for other community use, outdoor concerts, shows, awards, banquets, things along those lines. This is the schematic cost estimates that we've compiled for the project. We looked at it, breaking it up into the three phases for each of the three individual projects, and we also looked at doing it as such in three phases or to do the project all at once. We do, it would save money doing it all at once, but the keep in mind that every year that you go out with the project, obviously, things get more expensive, as we all know. This is just to give you a sense of the maintenance savings associated with the turf field. You can save pushing $20,000 a year going with a turf field. There's very little maintenance, nothing that the maintenance folks at the high school can't take care of. And then if they decide to plow, some of the other cost savings deal with us reclaiming the existing pavement, reusing that to save money, sizing the conduit for future use now, and also to try to push the project to be done all in one phase. And then just, this is, just gives you an example of what the athletic lighting might look like. I know we don't have a lot of neighbors right nearby, but it just goes to show you how quickly the candle, foot candles drop off and don't impact the adjacent properties. And just the next steps, as many of you know, the school committee's been putting together an actual project committee, get the fundraising in place. We hope to advance the design and get through permitting through the town, through both towns, actually, and prepare construction docks and hopefully be under construction next summer. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Finally, briefly, the Chair of the Advisory Committee, Kathy Cook. When Ms. Cook is finished, we'll go right to Article 5 and move through the warrant for the rest of the evening and see where we are. Ms. Cook?
Good evening. I'm Kathy Cook, the current Chair of the Advisory Committee. It's very nice to see everyone in person and inside. The Southborough Advisory Committee functions as the Town Finance Committee and is a subcommittee of this meeting, Town Meeting. As such, we are required to provide a voting recommendation to you on all 35 articles being considered tonight. Advisory would like to thank the Town Finance Team for its assistance during this year's budget season. The Town Finance Team puts together the initial proposed budget that Advisory then reviews. There are 35 articles on this year's warrant. There will be 17 articles, including on the moderator's proposed agenda, which we've approved, so those are out of the way. If you would like to see any of the 17 individual articles, you did what you need to do, so those are gone. Advisory has voted on most of the articles in the warrant. There are three we have not officially voted on because we wanted to hear from the citizen who sponsored two of them, which is 32 and 33, and wanted to hear the discussion regarding one of the more complicated ones, which is the one that we're calling the Trees Article, which is number 27. We've taken straw votes on all three, so we've got an idea of where we're going to vote, but we still want to hear from the sponsors and see what Town Meeting has to say about those three. On the screen tonight, you'll see the votes of both Advisory and the Select Board on all articles. As Mr. Simeon said, please feel free to ask any questions if you see a vote that's not unanimous, which there are several, or the Select Board and Advisory agree or disagree on the votes. The articles that Advisory did not unanimously support are: Number 16, which is the Nearie Feasibility Study; Number 25, which is the Easement Article; Number 26, which is the Noise Bylaw; Number 28, which is the Scenic Roads Article; Number 29, which is the Trails Committee Article; and Number 34, which is the Citizens Petition Requesting Formation of a New Pilot Committee. As for the budget, Advisory agrees with the budget printed in Article Number 9, except for the Board of Health budget, which we will explain further when we hold that budget. Advisory estimates that the year-over-year increase to your home tax bills is going to be about 4.1%. There are other factors besides the budget that influence the final tax rate. So right now, 4.1% is the best estimate that we have. Our estimates are assuming that the amendment that Advisory will ask you to make to the Board of Health budget, which is a reduction of $54,000, is approved. The overall proposed increase in expenditures is 3%, 3.3%, which is driven almost entirely by the increase in salaries, because most of our budget is salaries. The overall increase in the tax levy year-over-year is actually a pretty low 2%. The divergence between your projected tax bill of 4.1 and the 2% is explained by two factors. The town assessor, Mr. Sibelli, is currently projecting that house prices have increased in Southborough from 1121 to 1122, about 12%. He also estimated that the value of commercial properties during that same period did not increase at all. This is mostly pandemic-driven. It's nationwide. We're not an anomaly as far as this goes. As a result, more of the tax levy is going to be allocated to homes than in the past, so that explains why, instead of 2%, it's 4.1 for the houses. Commercial properties probably will have a decrease in their tax bill year-over-year. The second reason for the divergence is that Mr. Sibelli currently projects that new growth in the past year is about $27 million. And new growth allows us to spread the taxes over a broader tax base, so that's a good thing. The most notable proposed increase in any department budget, besides the Board of Health, is where we are tonight, the Algonquin Assessment to Southborough. Their budget actually is going to increase only 3%, but our town's share of that, or our assessment, is actually going up year-over-year 9%. That's caused by the fact that Southborough students, as of 10/121, have increased their share of the total student population compared to Northborough. The past few years, it went the other way. This year, it actually reversed, so we're having to pay more of the budget than we have in the past years. So our actual assessment is up 9%, so that's going to be the worst year-over-year increase you're going to see when you look at each individual budget. On the good news front, Southborough joined Northborough and Algonquin to form a health insurance group. As a result, the cost of health insurance for town employees year-over-year is flat. Advisory advocated for Southborough to consider doing that, and so we're pleased that that took place. I'm keeping this as short as I can intentionally because we've got a lot of really substantive articles to consider tonight that I think are going to generate a whole lot of robust debate. The rent report that we're required to do by our bylaw is on the table outside. I hope you got a copy of it. It goes into more detail than what I've said tonight, and hopefully gives you more information than what I've been able to provide in my short report. So thank you and enjoy tonight.
Thank you, Ms. Cook. So we move right to Article 5 now. Mr. Rubenstein?
I'm Carrie Jill Circle, Chair of the Personnel Board. I move Article 5 as printed in the warrant.
Is that coming up, guys? Okay, the article's been moved as printed in the warrant. Does it receive a second? I hear a second. Mr. Rubenstein, please.
Yes, so there are two handouts printed on gray paper to explain the changes. One is a track changes version. These are updates to the Salary Administration Plan that covers town employees. So there's a track changes version, and there's also a summary of the changes, which go through each of the changes and the reasons for them. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, I see unanimous support from the Select Board and the Advisory Committee. Any question or comment from the floor? Seeing none, this requires a majority vote as a general bylaw. All those in favor, please raise your cards. All opposed? Motion carries. Article 7. Ms. Malinowski? You can do it from there.
I move that pursuant to Mass-
Wait a minute, wait a minute. Is the table mic on?
Can you hear me? Oh, there we go.
Right into it.
You can hear me now. Okay. Article 7, I move that pursuant to Mass. General Laws, Chapter 150E, Section 7, as amended, the Town vote to approve the economic terms of the collective bargaining agreement between the Town and AFSMI Council 93, and to raise and appropriate $21,854 and transfer $7,113 from the Water Enterprise Fund reserves for the purpose of funding the collective bargaining agreement. And further, pursuant to Mass. General Law, Chapter 150E, Section 7, as amended, the Town vote to approve the economic terms of the terms of the collective bargaining agreement between the Town and local 167 Massachusetts Coalition of Police, and to raise and appropriate $28,540 for the purpose of funding the collective bargaining agreement. And further, pursuant to Mass. General Laws, Chapter 150E, Section 7, as amended, the Town vote to approve the economic terms of the collective bargaining agreement between the Town and local 445 Massachusetts Coalition of Police, and to raise and appropriate $18,703.
So receive a second.
Second.
Ms. Malinowski?
So these are for three collective bargaining agreements that have been ratified, and I'm open to take any questions.
I see unanimous support from the Select Board and the Advisory Committee on the screen. Any comment or question from the floor? Seeing none, this requires a majority vote as well. All those in favor, please raise your cards. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Article 9, Fiscal Year 23 Budget. Ms. Malinowski, that's also you.
Yes. I move that the Town vote to raise and appropriate and transfer the sum of $56,983,269 as may be necessary to fund the town's operating budget, and that the balance of $54,258,267 be raised and appropriated.
Does it receive a second?
Second.
All right, folks. Motion's been made and seconded, and the way we traditionally go through the budget article is to, like we did with the consent agenda earlier at the beginning of the meeting, we'll go through each budget line and allow time for someone to call out "hold" if there's a particular budget line or lines that you wish to discuss in more depth. We will hold those. At the end, we will vote the ones that were not held, and then we will work through one at a time the ones that were held. So again, any question about that process? The the budget lines begin on page 25 of the warrant booklet that you have. So I will begin, and we'll go through, and again, just yell out "hold" if you want to talk further about any particular line. Line 114, Moderator. Line 121, Elected Select Board. Line 122, Select Board. Line 131, Advisory Committee. Line 132, Reserve Fund. Line 135, Town Accountant. Line 136, Audit. Line 140, Elected Board of Assessors. Line 141, Assessors. Line 145, Treasurer Collector. Line 151, Legal. Line 152, Personnel Board. Line 153, Special Legal Counsel. Line 154, Municipal Technology Committee. Line 155, Technology. Line 159, Other Operational Support. Line 160, Elected Town Clerk. Line 161, Town Clerk. Line 171, Conservation Commission. Line 175, Planning Board. Line 176, Zoning Board of Appeals. Line 177, Open Space. I'm now at the top of page 28. Line 182, Economic Development Committee. Line 192, Public Buildings and Properties Maintenance. Line 193, Public Accessibility Committee. Line 210, Police Department. Line 220, Fire Department. Line 241, Building Department. Line 291, Civil Defense. Line 292, Animal Control Officer and Animal Inspector. Lines 40420, Department of Public Works. Line 510, Elected Board of Health. Line 512, Board of Health. Line 512 is held. Line 541, Council on Aging. Line 542, Youth Commission. Line 543, Veterans Services. Top of page 30, Line 610, Library. Line 630, Recreation Commission. Line 691, Historical Commission. Line 692, Memorial Day. Well, now we are into a category of lines 700 through 799, Debt Principal and Debt Interest, and there are four individual, I'm sorry, three individual lines there. Principal General Fund, Interest General Fund, and Bond Disclosure. All right. Line 910, Employee Benefits. Top of page 31, Line 930, Budget Capital. Line 941, Court Judgments. Line 945, Liability Insurance. Line 300, Elected School Committee. Line 301, Southborough Schools. 301 will be held. 301 will be held. Top of page 32, Line 302, Algonquin Regional High School. Line 304, Assabut Valley Regional Technical High School. And finally, Line 305, Norfolk County Agricultural High School. All right, by way of review, I heard, sorry, is there a hand? Yes. Okay, I can't, you gotta get up and go to the mic, be recognized, I can't hear you. Name and address, please.
Hi, Michael Weis on 189 Corderville Road. On behalf of Ms. Fiori, we'd like to hold the police budget.
Hold the what budget?
The police budget, which is what article number? 210.
All right, we will hold 210. So, by way of review, then, we have held 210, Police Department, 512, Board of Health, and 301, Southborough Schools. Did I miss any other holds? All right, at this point, then, I will entertain a motion to amend Ms. Malinowski's original motion to pass the, all of the non-held line items. Do I have that motion? So, moved, is there a second? All right, so this is a majority vote, requires us to pass this before we move on to the held articles. All those in favor of passing the non-held articles, please raise your cards. All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. All right, we'll take them in order that they appear in the budget, not necessarily in the order held. So, let's move to Budget Line 210, Police Department. Mr. Weis on, please go back to the mic and let us know what's on your mind.
Actually, it was Ms. Fiori who wanted to tell, but I agree. We'd like to know what happened to our police chief. He was summoned to an emergency meeting that broke open meeting law for the Board of Selectmen. Our understanding was he was escorted to his office, and he has not been seen since. We are paying his budget, his funds, presumably. We'd like to know, I think we, as taxpayers, have a right to know something as to what has happened.
Yeah, I'm gonna, I'm gonna tend to restrict this to the extent that the status of the police chief affects the budget, but do you want to either Town Council or Selectmen address that narrow question? Does the budget, to what extent does the budget include or not include the police chief? Maybe we go to Mr. Ballantyne on that one. I think that part is a fair question. And I won't presume to speak for the Selectmen on the rest of it, but I presume they will, and I'll let them in a minute, indicate that the rest of this is still subject to executive session and privilege. But do you want to speak about the budget, Mr. Ballantyne?
Yeah, I apologize, I could've went to that mic right in front of me.
That's all right.
But Brian Ballantyne, Town Treasurer, and very simple answer, the budget was created with the current police, or police chief in mind as he was being paid when, you know, whatever happened, happened. So, there is money in the budget for our police chief next year. If that changes at all, we make anything like a, anything else, we make changes on the go, so the budget does include that position.
All right, thank you. We will have, we will have a quick corrective addition to the motion that's on the floor. Did you want to speak to anything else? I didn't know if that's why you were going down there. Yeah, no, it's fine. Okay. Ms. Malinowski, I do need you to read the list of items that are between the top line of the budget and the balance. Okay, so, and I'll just paraphrase her original motion because there's a record of that. There's a $56 million number, and then there's a $54 million number at the end, and in between are some things that account for that difference, and I'm going to have her read those as though they were incorporated and will be incorporated into the motion on the floor. So, can you move that, please?
Sure. So, I move to transfer from the cemetery perpetual care of $25,000, transfer from free cash of $1,633,791, transfer from capital articles to close $131,466. From Budget 0100-6-192-001-68542, Townhouse ADA, Article 8, from 4918, $16,036.17. From Budget Line 0100-6-192-000-52550, Maintenance of Equipment, $284.58. From Budget Line 0100-6-192-006-68540, DPW Air Compressor, from Article 8, 4918, $2,560. From Budget 0100-6-192-011-68571, Corderville Hall Reno, Article 9, from 61320, $18,046.81. From Budget 0100-6-215-000-68562, PS Radio System Upgrades, Article 13, from 32319, $59.3. From Department 0100-6-215-000-68566, PS Radio Repeater, Article 9, 61320, $302.83. From Department 0100-6-220-000-68565, Lucas Device, Article 9, 61320, $1,515. From Department 0100-6-400-422-68200, Sidewalk Maintenance Improvement, Article 4801, $48,778.58. From Department 0100-6-400-425-68401, Chipper Annual Town Meeting, 52221, $30,000. Department 0100-6-400-421-48545, DPW Radio System, Article 8, from 4918, $13,883. Transfer from Overlay Reserve of $279,201. Transfer from Ambulance Fund Receipts, Reserved of $407,300. Transfer from Septic Betterment Fund of $30,097. Transfer from Reserve SBAB Fund Balance of $2,014. Transfer from Water Enterprise Fund of $216,133.
Does that receive, do those specifics receive a second? So, let me just explain, you know, this is one of those peculiarities of town meeting in this particular article. Our total budget as printed in the warrant is in the $56 million range, and what Ms. Malinowski just read is a list of sources that tick away at that number such that the raise and appropriate number is a couple million dollars less. So, hopefully that make, with that short explanation, that makes sense, but that had to be read into the record of the motion. So, getting back to Budget 210, the Police Department, Mr. Weis on, I don't, or Ms. Burns Fiori, I don't mean to suggest you're not without recourse, but the actual, I think the question is, what is the status of the police chief? That is absolutely the subject of, I'm told, of executive privilege at this point. I imagine you could attempt to persuade the hall to cut the budget in some way, but it's up to you whether you want to go down that road. Go right ahead.
Can I ask a question? Patricia Burns Fiori.
And address, please.
10 Winter Street, Fayetteville. Are we currently paying the salary of a police chief?
Did you cover that, Brian? Okay, I'm gonna, unless I'm told differently, I think that falls in the same category as to his current status.
But doesn't that affect our budget?
Sorry.
Doesn't that affect our budget, whether we're paying a police chief? And I'm kind of one of those employers because I'm a taxpayer, shouldn't I get to know if I'm currently paying a police chief?
Yeah, I will defer to the Select Board Chair as to whether you choose to address that specific question.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. At this time, it's covered by executive session.
Okay.
So, we don't even get to know whether there is a current salary being paid to a police chief? Is that correct?
Not at this, sorry, not at this time.
When do you expect that we would know that?
Town Council has some clarification as well.
We can't comment on an ongoing matter that's subject to executive privilege. It wouldn't be fair to the process or to the police chief. The budget reflects a salary commensurate with that position. That's all we can say. This is a forward-thinking budget.
Any other comment or question on Budget Line 210? Budget Line 210, or the next one?
The 210.
Go right ahead, name and address, please.
Karen Sokel, 16 Newton Street. The transfer of the perpetual cemetery fund, does that need to happen? I'm glad it's still there, but I'm just questioning that transfer.
So, I'm not sure if I understood the question, whether that's one for Brian or one for the Select Board.
The transfer, it said transfer of, I believe it was $25,000 from the perpetual cemetery fund to fund the budget.
So, can we, yeah, just grab a mic down front, Brian, and explain the pedigree of the transfer that she's talking about.
That transfer is an annual transfer that's to, the theory of it is to offset some of the general government services that are used for the cemetery. So, $25,000 is just, it's sort of an estimate we use every year. It's just interest on the perpetual care fund, it's not principal, so.
Thank you.
All right, any other comment or question, Line 210? Rather than take a vote individually, I'm gonna go right now to Line 512, Board of Health, talk through that, and then we'll do the last one, and then see where we are. Name and address.
Al Hamilton, 35 Pine Hill Road. I believe we have to now vote on Budget 210, isn't that correct? It was brought up and brought before us.
I'm just trying to explain my intention to vote on the three held budgets once we talk through them, but I'll proceed, if you feel strongly about it, Mr. Hamilton, I'm fine with that, too. I think we're fine either way, but why don't we do that, then? We have a, we have an amended motion on the floor to take the non-held budgets, and now by implication, we need to have a vote on each of the three held budgets. We'll do it one at a time, so all those in favor of now passing Budget Line 210, please raise your cards. All opposed? Motion passes. Okay, we'll move to Line 512, Board of Health. You gotta have, you gotta go to the mic. You can speak to it there, so maybe stand up, but Ms. Cook, Chair of Advisory, held Line 512.
So, Advisory held this budget for, it's a pretty complicated reason, so try to stay with me. Advisory has worked on this budget for two years and probably spent more time on this one budget per dollar of the budget than any budget we've ever worked on, and we're still not, we still don't have an agreement with the Board of Health and Select Board as far as what to do for fiscal year 23. So, the Board of Health is an elected board that oversees the town health department. As such, the Board of Health is responsible for developing the initial departmental budget each year. Advisory's responsibility is to review the budget and work with the Board of Health to try to come to an agreement if we have a difference, which we do for this year. So, although the collaborative process was followed in good faith, we could not come to a consensus fiscal year 23 budget. The budget printed in the warrant is a budget supported by the Board of Health, not Advisory. During the pandemic, additional health department services were needed to comply with all of the myriad requirements of the pandemic, including a significant increase in reporting to state and federal agencies and operating many, many vaccination clinics. During the pandemic, both the directors and nurses' hours were increased significantly. In both fiscal year 21 and fiscal year 22, the increased cost of our health department was funded solely by the federal and state grants provided through the CARES Act and/or additional funding through FEMA. Therefore, even though the cost of the health department increased dramatically for those two years, the increase was not funded through the tax levy. For fiscal year 23, the Board of Health and the Select Board are recommending that the tax levy start funding more of the total current cost of the Board of Health. Until the pandemic, the health department had three part-time employees, a director, a nurse, and an office administrator. For fiscal year 23, the Board of Health is asking to make the nurses' position full-time and be funded through the tax levy. The Board of Health has not asked to make the director position full-time as far as town funding for fiscal year 23. So, to be clear, the two positions are still going to be in place, the question is how to fund them. Instead, the Select Board has voted to use $50,000 of the American Rescue Plan Act money that's been allocated to Southborough, which is $3 million in total, roughly, to offset the increased cost of the director only. They have not proposed to do the same thing for the nurse, and Advisory doesn't understand the reason for that. It doesn't make sense to us. We don't have a good explanation as to why you do one and not the other. Advisory does not agree with using the tax levy to fund either position for now. Instead, Advisory is recommending to the Select Board that ARPA funds be used to offset the entire cost increase of the two positions for fiscal year 23, which would be an additional 54K. So, instead of using 50K of ARPA money, we recommend that they use 104K. And Select Board has total control of the ARPA money, it's not a vote at town meeting, it's not a vote of Advisory, so we are asking, which is all we can do, that Select Board votes to fund that entire increase with ARPA and not just $50,000 of it. Advisory believes that needs of the town fulfilled by the Board of Health may potentially shift substantially post-pandemic, and a long-term vision, plan, and structure of the Board of Health needs to be articulated in detail to reflect this before committing to changing two part-time positions to full-time. It is Advisory's view that the town should wait until we are beyond the pandemic, which, you know, we hope we're going to get there soon, before making the decision on the long-term structure as the services and priorities of the future are likely to be different than they are today. Additionally, Massachusetts is currently advocating that local boards of health consider regionalization of certain common health services as a way to expand a local community's services and, at the same time, reduce the overall cost of their local health department. Massachusetts has awarded a $300,000 annual renewable grant to Southborough, Westborough, Northborough, and Boylston to be used to develop a program of shared health department services for the four communities. Currently, that grant is being used to provide additional nursing services to the four communities and to provide food inspection services. We applaud the deployment of this grant. Advisory feels that the local Board of Health should spend the next year fully investigating the role of regionalization and provide a report at this time next year that answers the long-term structural questions. We therefore do not recommend making the nurse and director's positions- We therefore do not recommend making the nurse and director's positions full-time, benefited positions, funded by the tax levy until that process is played out. This type of increased cost is exactly what ARPA funds are intended to be used for. Advisory also believes that the state will continue to provide additional incentives to those communities that participate in regionalization and that Southborough should actively pursue those incentives. We will continue to work with the Board of Health to achieve a structure that represents the services the town wants and needs, utilizes all available federal and state funding, and leverages cost sharing with other towns. So that's the reason we're proposing this. And I also want to say, this is in no way not an appreciation of the services that the two full-time people have rendered to Southborough over the last two years. They've done a yeoman's work, so this is not anything to not appreciate that service. We just think that this is such a huge step. We've looked at the cost of public health departments in other towns, and if you look at Southborough right now, it's way up there per capita compared to other towns in the state. Wayland may be a little bit more, but that's, there's not many more, so we are really up there. Look at Northborough, they've got a part-time nurse. So we just think that it's too early to truly make this decision to take two part-time positions, make them full-time, until we really study this further and see what the state is going to provide as incentives to regionalize.
So Ms. Cook, before we go any farther, do you have an intention with regard to this budget line?
Yes, we have already followed the amendment with the town clerk.
Well, you've gotta put that amendment on the floor.
Okay, so.
I mean, that's just administratively easier to turn it in ahead of time, but we need to have that on the floor.
So now?
Sure.
Okay. So Advisory Committee proposes to reduce Budget 512 by $54,000 from what's written in the warrant of 260652 to 206652.
All right. The motion's been made and seconded, and I'm gonna try to summarize it in one sentence, and Ms. Cook certainly had me off at the pass, but what Advisory's amendment would reduce the amount printed in the warrant because there is an alternative, in their view, source of funding for one of the positions in the Board of Health, that being the American Rescue Plan. So with that, comment or question over here?
Yes, thank you. Chelsea Malinowski, 1 William Coleroy Lane, speaking as the Chair of the Board of Health. And I just wanted to address the process and conclusion that the Board of Health has gone through in the last year. As Ms. Cook alluded to, there's currently three part-time positions in your operating budget for FY '22, and we are suggesting, the Board of Health is suggesting that we increase one of those positions to be full-time in the budget. There's a few reasons for that. We took a look at what the nurse was currently doing, and we went through the Personnel Board process of adding her position to the SAP, so that way it went through a vetting process, it was banded correctly, and it went through a third-party review. We thought that was an important process to go through because due to the pandemic, we did not have the luxury of time to go through that process prior to hiring this particular position. The other reason for that is to create sustainable funding, and by putting it in the Personnel Board plan, it shows a commitment to the town that we're looking to fund this position on a consistent basis. We also added some job functions to the position and elevated it to be an Assistant Health Director, so that if there were hours that didn't need to be used for nursing, then this position could pinch-hit in other areas within the health department, and we could do some cross-training. So it was just a more dynamic position, and we thought it was the appropriate way to go. The second reason for us requesting ARPA money for the director position and not the nurse position was to be fiscally responsible. There, you know, the American Rescue Plan Act is one-time money, and we recognize that. Our auditor has cautioned us against using one-time money for a year-over-year expense. So understanding that, you know, that we're looking for more sustainable funding throughout the Board of Health, and we're trying to phase it over several years, so not, you know, not to add two positions next year, but do it over a phased approach. We don't know where the state is going in terms of funding. We've been told that there'll be public health funds available to do regionalization. The Board of Health has committed that we will keep our options open for that. We certainly would love to partner with other communities, given the size of our town, with the grant that we currently have that's working out really well for a lot of the aspects of the Board of Health, and we are certainly open to continuing that, although we currently don't have a full-time person in the Board of Health budget. So our concern is that you can't, we don't, we're not comfortable with going regional on everything at this time, and we don't know what the funding's gonna look like. And the last point I want to make is, we don't want to be a reactionary department. We want to be proactive, and I think the pandemic has proven that we need to be more proactive and be ready for things that are going to come up in the community. And I just want to reiterate what Ms. Cook said, that our staff have done a wonderful job of keeping our community safe, being available for residents to ask questions, providing clinics for vaccinations in-town, regional, whatever's needed, working with the school system. So I think that, you know, this department has really stepped up over the last two years, and we would really appreciate your support for this one position of $54,000. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any other comment or question?
Yes.
Yes.
Nancy Sacco, 24 Jericho Hill Road. I'm also on the Board of Health. Is it okay for me to talk, and you have two people? I don't, I know Jim had sent out a thing, you had to say it was a meeting if two of you spoke.
Yeah, I mean, do you, if you have a meeting posted for tonight, then.
I don't know if we did, that's why, is it, we do, okay. So I'd just like to thank you for recognizing our staff. They've done a fabulous job the last two years. The whole 16 years I've been on the board, we have worked with bare bones, and I've just been waiting and waiting for a pandemic to come, and it came, and it's not going away. And I didn't want it to come, I'm just saying, I knew we were gonna get burned, and we did, and it's a nominal amount in your tax. It's gonna be like five bucks, it's a cup of coffee. We, our staff needs to have job security. I think we owe it to them for what they did the last two years. So that's, that's it.
All right, thank you. Any other comment or question in the back? Yes.
Hi, Claire Reynolds, 104 Main Street. I would just like to reiterate a point that Kathy Cook brought up in terms of some work that they did in looking at staffing levels with other health departments comparable, and it appears that Southborough is well-staffed, understanding how it was done. The other thing is, folks, just keep in mind that when you add another person, in this case, if you added somebody in the range of $90,000 for a salary, you are also adding about a 30% kick for the benefits. So you have to also take that into consideration as a taxpayer, and I think that number comes from Brian Valentine. He would be the one who would be able to make any corrections on that. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, right on this side.
Bonnie Staniff, 179 Middle Road. The ARPA funds, do they need to be spent all at once, or can they be held over for another year? So can we commit to this for two years of funding by the Board of Selectmen? I mean, if it's a, if it's a need and we have these funds, and that's the purpose of the funds, I would think you would want to carry those funds to address the needs of the Board of Health, even if it's a two-year commitment, so they can figure out the direction they're going in.
So Mrs. Staniff, we considered that, and we had a lengthy discussion with the Board of Health, and we supported the approach that they were taking with bringing one staff member on this year and potentially the next, and I reiterate some of the things Ms. Malinowski has said as well. We certainly, obviously, we could, and we allocated $50,000 from ARPA towards the Board of Health budget, but I think overall, the board was committed to the path that the Board of Health is going, and based on the past two years, what it's shown us, it's shown us that we were understaffed, that we had put this, our Board of Health, no one, well, Nancy said, I guess, that we, she anticipated a pandemic, but I don't think the rest of us did, and I think it showed us some deficits, and this is a way to correct that going forward. So I guess to answer your question, yes, ARPA could have been used, and the board discussed this and felt very strongly this was the correct path.
Mr. Moderator, a follow-up question, then?
Go right ahead.
I know in the past, we had a part-time nurse for the senior center and for the Board of Health, because I initiated that. Do we still have a part-time nurse in the senior center that no longer assists with the Board of Health?
Yes.
Is that position part-time or full-time?
Part-time.
Thank you.
All right, I think we're still at this mic, and then over here, sir.
Dorian Jacinski, 33 Presidential Drive. Just want some clarification. If Advisory wants to decrease the budget by $54,000, and the Board of Selectmen, Select Board, sorry, is in charge of the ARPA money, if they don't vote to do that, then isn't it irrelevant if we vote for this amendment? I'm just trying to understand where this money's gonna come from, because the Board, the Select Board's in charge of the ARPA money, and they haven't voted the way Advisory is asking us to vote with the amendment. I just want some clarification.
Yeah, so I'll be corrected if I'm wrong, but if the current motion on the floor, which is to amend the budget down $54,000, is passed, I don't think the Selectmen have any obligation to backfill it.
So isn't it irrelevant to vote on this amendment?
No, you could reduce the overall town budget from $56 million, whatever, to fix it, $56 million minus $54,000.
Okay.
Again, anybody else? Tell me if I'm wrong on that. Go ahead, over here, sir.
Jim Coleroy, 51 Central Street. Yeah, Mr. Moderator, this is not my first time at town meeting, maybe my second, so you knew that, being a young guy. Couple of things I want to tell the citizens. One of the things you hear about other towns, other towns do, let me tell you, some of the other towns, and I've worked in a lot of these other towns, do not work very well, some of them do. But this is the town you live in. This is your service. I don't care what Marlboro does, or West Boylston, or anybody else. It's the place we, where we live. And whether this pandemic passes or not, there are going to be others in the future. And I think we have a good operating department down there right now. I get to see them because I'm in the building department as your fire inspector. And I'm also a taxpayer for all my life, and I think we need to consider that when we take a vote. When you jump on regionalization, it all looks good under the bean counters. And all of us that worked in industry know how the bean counters, bean counters work. Sometimes it's okay, most of the time it's not, saves money, and people get overworked and overdone, and the quality of the service isn't good. The quality in the service in this group is very good, and I saw seniors coming in and getting help, so on and so forth. I don't want to put that at risk. I think that's a dumb move for our part. If they finally come with a program that's, that we get to vote on at town meeting for some regionalization, and I can see Southborough, Ashland, Marlboro, Westborough, and Northborough and the surrounding, right close to us, West Boylston, yeah, what happens if they end up, we end up joining that, and that's where you're gonna go for your Board of Health? You don't know what that future is. But we do know what we have now. I mean, I'm not willing to vote on the Advisory Committee's recommendation. I'm sorry, I'm just not going to. And I think we, we as the citizens, gotta look, did we like this service? Do we want to pay for it? To me, the answer is yes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I go again, Paul?
Yeah, I'll have, you can, please go to the center mic here, and, you know, unless there, after Ms. Cook speaks, if there is anything new that we haven't heard, one side or the other, we'll do that, otherwise, I think we're ready to vote. Go ahead.
Go to the center mic?
Right here.
So just to make sure that everyone understands Advisory recommendation, it's not on?
Kathy, I'm not sure you're on. There you go.
Sorry. So to make sure that everyone understands Advisory recommendation, we fully support having the two, the nurse and director, be full-time, or the equivalent of full-time for fiscal year '23. So we're not talking about reducing services. For those who've been to a lot of town meetings, including the previous speaker, we should know by now that once we add full-time people to our town budget, it's very difficult to change that, to reduce that going forward. During the pandemic, we didn't, we did not reduce anyone's hours, we didn't lay anyone off, we did everything we could to keep everybody fully employed. So all we're trying to do is say, wait a minute, go slow, let's make sure this is the right structure. We're hoping we're gonna get more services for less money, so we're just trying to save some money here and actually provide more services. So we don't know what the right structure is, we don't know if going forward, this is what we really need, but I can tell you that I've been on Advisory for a long time, never did the Board of Health come to Advisory and say that they were understaffed before the pandemic. So we just have a hard time buying that this structure, which was created because of the pandemic, funded with pandemic funds, is automatically the right structure going forward. We just want to go slow. So we want the right health department for Southborough, and we bring up other towns because it is relevant to look at what other people do and spend at times. So we are not saying we don't want this structure. We don't know what structure we really need, we just don't want to permanently lock ourselves into this with the town, the tax levy. Yeah, we want the Board of Health to have another year to study this, look at what the state does, and they are more and more focused on regionalization. So we want to get more for less money. That's what we think is the right way to approach this.
All right, thank you. Something new over here?
Yep, Andrea Hamilton, 119 Northborough Road.
Yes.
In full disclosure, I am the Chair of the ARPA Committee, currently looking at how to allocate these funds, but this opinion is not that of the committee, just myself. So right now, the way this is structured, we would have one year. We would fund the nurse position through our tax dollars going forward, presumably permanently, but we still have this open director position, which we right now would need to continue to be funded through separate money, presumably through ARPA for the next two years. So I also want to point out that we haven't actually solved the problem as it stands today because we still have a position that's outstanding that would eventually need to be funded either permanently or through regionalization. So regardless, we need to explore this regionalization option over the next two years if we aren't intending to make this director position permanent at an upcoming town meeting. So to me, it makes sense. I think it's a little cleaner to fund this entirely through temporary funds for a year, and it just gives us a year in which we can look at, what does regionalization mean? What does it mean to keep it all in-house? At the end of which, we can decide to fund them all through a warrant article and have this be a permanent internal position. It doesn't eliminate that option at all, so I think it just gives us a year to have a bridge, so I'm in favor of it.
Thank you. Okay, on the floor, before, something new?
Well, my opinion, and I haven't spoken yet, so. Betsy Rosabloom, 5 Strawberry Hill Road. I was Chair of Personnel Board a year ago when this all started to come up, so I had some familiarity with the issues. Public health is public safety. We spent $20 million on a public safety building. I don't know why we're still having this debate about the health department, and I would urge everybody to reject the Advisory opinion, with all due respect to the hard work of those men and women, and support your health department. Thank you.
Okay, the motion on the floor is to modify Budget Line 512 by reducing it by $54,000. It requires a majority vote. You're voting on whether to reduce Line 512. All in favor of that motion, please raise your cards. All opposed? Yep, we're gonna count. Tellers, please come forward. Everybody remain in your seats, remain in front of the back wall, so everybody's vote gets counted. Tellers, don't forget to count your own vote, believe it or not, it does happen. Believe it or not, it does happen. Okay, hold on a second, tellers. Bonnie, you have a question?
Clarification, please. This vote is reducing the salary line, or the Board of Health budget, by a sum of money, but are we also voting to support the Advisory Board, or is that a separate request after this?
Did you say vote to?
Reduce.
No, that's what this is.
Right.
There's nothing else on the floor right now.
But to support the request of the Advisory Board, is that going to be a separate vote?
So the Advisory's motion is to reduce, it does not identify a replacement source.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. All right, all those in favor of the motion to reduce the budget, please raise your cards, and keep them up. Tellers, off you go, please.
These folks, they will do, you and me, if we want to raise a card.
Yeah, okay.
Nope, we don't have a card up.
So, are they double counting? These two ladies, are they double counting the other two pairs that went first?
See the yellow tape? They're doing from the yellow tape up here, to the yellow tape, the one right by the C.
All right.
And then this pink from the back. See the back?
So there's six people in this aisle?
Yeah, two do on this side, two do in the front, two do in the back.
All right, all right.
Dorian.
I got it.
And Claire in the back.
I got it. I wish I knew how to turn this on.
Do you want me to give them a signal to cut it off?
Category of funk.
You know what? There's no way we're finished. I got to fill you in on my video, question, question. Man, I believe when they had one vote at the end, it was a two-thirds vote, it should have been, it was on a zoning article, and it's an odd zoning article, it's an MBTA stuff, it only provided majority vote, and when they passed, but if it had been a two-thirds, it went a lot by one vote, 66.45%. And man, I'm a, after seeing this, I'm probably, you're right, what they do is the only, everything else is just a voice vote, they don't, these cards, they just shut up. But when they had to do a county, it was fast, it was simple.
Keep the cards up, please.
One wonder it did.
These two aren't doing that, but that's okay. Hey Jim, tell them for next time, let's get this one done. Are we all set in the back? Dorian, everybody set? All right, so let's bring those numbers forward, please.
We're telling.
Okay, all right. All those opposed to the motion, please raise your cards. Keep them up.
It's hard to say though. It's better.
I ask for polls, and I don't take the motion. I let people discuss if the motion exists, and if they do an amendment, it's just an But they have to do it right then and there, while they're discussing it.
Sure.
Doesn't matter, it's the same, roughly the same number of steps. So use a good example of what I was alluding to earlier.
If you're done counting, can people, Peter Con, 43 Highland Street? Okay, hold on. Name and town, please, and then state your point of order. I just did. Peter Con, 43 Highland Street, just asking if you're done counting, can people put their hands down? Yes. Fabulous. The motion was 99 yea, 100 nay. Motion failed. We are now back to the budget item as printed in the warrant. All those in favor of the original? Yeah, after this? No, we're talking about, right now, we're just talking about Line 512. All those in favor of Line 512 as is, please raise your cards. All those opposed? Smart people, smart people. Okay, that motion passes. I appreciate that very much, and I'm being very sincere about that. All right, we are now at Line 301, Southborough Schools, it was held over here somewhere. Whoever held that, please come to the mic, name and address, and what's on your mind?
Howard Rose, 2 Bantry Road. I'd like some clarification. Nowhere in the budget could I find the light item where the income from Southborough Extended Day was included in the Southborough School budget. So I'm going to pull that up.
Lisa, do you have something on that, or do we go to Brian?
So recently, the Southborough Extended Day Program was taken over by the school system. At that time, they voted to keep the budget exactly that same. That same budget included over $88,000 a year in rent, that we're not charging ourselves. I'd like to see where that income is, and how it's been applied to the school budget.
All right, so who, somebody up here can answer Mr. Rose's question? Who's, what's that saying?
Superintendent Martino.
Did he dig Greg Martino, Superintendent of Schools?
I don't think he's on, guys. The mic is not on.
Greg Martino, Superintendent of Schools, and I live at 53 Parkerville Road, which is near a school, so I have a very dry sense of humor. So in regards to the Extended Day Program, that is not included in our operational budget. That is a self-sustaining operation based on tuitions that we'll receive, and that sits outside of our operational budget, and sits in a revolving account. And we can provide that information with you, but it is not part of the operational budget you are voting this evening.
And that would be fine, perhaps, if that was, it was no longer, if it was a separate thing, and it was just rent, then the rent should have appeared somewhere. Now that it's part of the school system, I propose and suggest and almost demand that it's actually part of the school budget. There's a significant amount of money that comes into the school system that is not controlled by town, this meeting or any budget process, it's basically, respectfully, a slush fund that has no, no one in this room has any control of what that money does. So I'd request that either that money gets added to this budget, or gets, or that amount of money gets removed from this budget, and that money is used for part of the school And if that's the case, if it needs to be, I would propose an amendment to reduce the school budget by $88,000 to cover that rent.
You're going to have to put that in writing.
Okay.
And your proposal is, I'm sorry, I just, I'm having a little trouble hearing you, to increase or decrease, and by how much, please?
Decrease the budget by $88,000.
Okay, you got to come up and put that in writing for the clerk.
Okay.
for a second, and then we can speak to it. Vanessa, you're gonna put it up?
I'm gonna start.
Yeah. No, no.
I know, I know, there it is.
So I think it's mine, don't worry about it. I don't want any of the blood there, and then this is dark now, you know, so, um, I might have to.
Thank you.
Yeah, your presentation was well. No surprise. Yeah, okay.
While we wait for the motion to go up on the screen, some of you may recall, um, and I'm not expressing a preference either way, but in my very first year as moderator, we went through the entire budget article without any holes. John Wilson was still alive at the time, and, and, and I asked him, right in front of town meeting, has that ever happened before? And he couldn't recall a time it had ever happened before or since. This is much more interesting and exciting. Than just zipping right by it and onto the next article. But it has happened once. Not expressing any preference. Set? Vanessa? Okay, so on the screen, it's just a, it's a, it's a matter of math. Uh, the original budget total for this line was twenty-two, two-eight, three, four, four, three, and, uh, Mr. Rose is proposing to substitute the words twenty-two, one-nine-five, four-four-three, which is a reduction of eighty-eight thousand dollars. Does that motion receive a second? I hear a second. Let's start. Comment or question here? Uh, Mr. Challen, name and, uh, address, please. Add a hundred bucks for a mic.
I'll take it out of my teller fee, okay? So. Uh, Roger Challen, twenty-nine Oak Hill Road, also Chair of the Southborough School Committee. Just gonna make one point, that rent was never part of the Southborough, uh, operating budget before. So that's really why there's kind of nothing to take out of the operating budget.
All right, thank you.
It wasn't a revolving fund, and I think, uh, Ms. Cook may speak to that.
Yeah. Name and address, go ahead, ma'am.
Kathy Cook, Living Grove St. Way, and I am speaking as part of the advisory committee. Um, so I don't want to spend a lot of time talking about revolving funds because we could spend a lot of time. But the school does have a rent revolving fund that collects rent from two sources. One is the, um, Southborough Extended Day Program, and the other is the superintendent's, superintendent's office where Northborough and Algonquin pay Southborough for, um, a portion of the cost of that office. Southborough has ten other revolving funds in the town budget. You just passed an article with the consent agenda where you approved the expenditures of money from those. They're never in the operating budget. Um, it's done through a revolving fund, um, but those revolving funds are vetted. So I was the liaison to the schools this year from advisory. I looked at, in detail, at the, um, rent revolving fund. Everything was spent appropriately. There are limits to what can be done. It's basically the equivalent of their reserve fund. The town has a reserve fund. Town also has a hundred thousand dollar, um, capital article, which you have already approved, I think it's part of the consent agenda, um, to basically provide money to fix things that happen during the year. Stuff happens, we can't predict everything. So the school uses this money to basically fix building, um, problems that they don't know about until they happen. I mean, that's all they use it for. It's about a hundred thirty thousand dollars that goes into it each year. So it's not part of the budget, so it is inappropriate to reduce the school budget by eighty thousand dollars to, um, because it's not in there to begin with.
Just let it go. Okay, um, I'll come back to Mr. Rose, seeing no one else at the mics. Go ahead.
Thank you. First of all, it was kind of shameful that we are charging the families that need it the most, who are using Extended Day, that much in rent for a building we already own that costs them next to nothing. Um, this motion today was, why are we paying twice for a building we already own? This revolving fund, um, is nothing more than a way to pay for things that maybe they've used it, you know, it's things that should be paid for by the town, voted for by the town. We shouldn't be paying for it twice. We shouldn't be paying for rent at all. And now, this program has been taken over by the school. It's not rent anymore. It is our program, run by the school system, so resolving, it shouldn't be in the revolving fund anymore. It should be part of the school budget, because that's where the funds, and that's who's running the program. They have taken over all the salaries, they have all the staff, they are now part of the school system. A revolving fund is no longer appropriate under the system they have set up. I remove, I state, uh, continue my statement to reduce it by eighty-eight thousand and take that, uh, funds they're, they're taking from our working families and put it back into the school system and not charge us twice. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. The motion on the floor is to reduce budget line three zero one by eighty-eight thousand dollars. This is the delta that you see on the screen. Um, all those in favor of the motion to reduce the number, please raise your cards. All opposed? Okay, that motion fails, and we are back to the original item of line three oh one as printed in the warrant. Uh, all those in favor of line, uh, passing line three oh one, please raise your cards. All opposed? Okay, that motion carries. I need a wrap-up motion now on the budget, I assume, from Ms. Malinowski, is that right?
Okay. Can you hear me? Can you hear me now? Nope. Can you hear me? Yeah? Okay.
Actually, do I need one, Brian? Because we didn't, nothing has changed. At, at the end of it, it's net-net, what she already moved.
Yep.
All right. All right, and, and we have, uh, you know, piecemeal, uh, passed all of the line items in the budget, so I don't think we need a, another motion. I think we're, we're moving on to Article ten.
Okay.
Anybody disagree back here? All right. Article ten.
Mr. Moderator?
Hold on, please. Article ten, FY twenty-three, water budget, Mr. Dennington.
Mr. Moderator, I move Article ten as printed in the warrant.
So receive a second? All right, Mr. Dennington, go ahead.
Uh, just briefly, this is the annual town meeting article that authorizes the town's Water Enterprise Fund for fiscal year two thousand twenty-three, as shown in the warrant.
Any comment or question on Article ten? I'm seeing unanimous support from select board and advisory. All right, this requires a majority vote. All those in favor of Article ten, please raise your cards. All opposed? Motion carries. Article thirteen. Mr. Malinowski. This is the, uh, select board's, uh, article, but they've designated, uh, Mr. Malinowski to speak to it. But let's put it on the floor, please.
Good evening, my name is Jason Malinowski, one William Cleary Lane, and I'm the Chair of the Capital Planning Committee. Mr. Moderator, I move Article thirteen as printed in the warrant.
So receive a second? All right, before we get into this, I understand there may be up to two.
You're gonna have two amendments.
Yeah, and are they here?
Uh, they've already been filed, so they should be ready to go.
All right, well, let's put, let's put the first, are there, are they, um, well, let's put the first one on the floor, please.
So, Mr. Moderator, with your, uh, consent, I'd just like to give a brief overview of the article, and then I'm gonna go through each amendment, uh, one at a time, and, and if that would work here.
If you think it would be more helpful that way, that's fine.
Okay. So this article, uh, covers the, all capital expenditures that are anticipated that aren't gonna be covered by the next two forthcoming articles, uh, for the FY twenty-three budget. These are, all these items, regardless of whether we keep them in or pull them out through future amendments, were vetted through a very thorough process conducted by the select board-appointed Capital Planning Committee. It involved numerous public meetings with all department heads, a look at short-term, medium-term, and long-term goals, and, um, all of these, uh, bring the unanimous consent of the Capital Planning Committee, and my also understanding is the select board and advisory committee as well. With that, Mr. Moderator, I am going to propose amendment number one. I move to amend the motion to strike the words item N, M, as in Mary, Northborough Road, Culvert.
Can we scroll to that? M? Sorry, Jason, go ahead.
I move to amend the main motion by striking the words item M, as in Mary, Northborough Road, Culvert.
Just striking it completely out?
Striking it completely out.
All right, there's a lot more on the slide. So does, does that motion receive a second? All right, does it make sense to make your second motion before we get into the changes here? Do we wanna just deal with?
I would keep them separate.
All right.
Um, and let me, a brief explanation of this is, um, the DPW has initiated a public bid process for this work. The expectation was that thirty-eight thousand dollars would be funded through the general fund, with a matching seventy thousand dollars coming from state ARPA funds. Unfortunately, the bid results were unfavorable to the town coming in, um, in excess of eighty-four thousand five hundred dollars greater than the expected sum of the original cost. Therefore, it is the recommendation of the Capital Planning Committee, Select Board, and Advisory Committee to, um, go back, um, to the drawing board on this project and bring it forward in the future if it's seen, if feasible.
Any comment or question on the motion to amend Article thirteen?
Karen Sokel, sixteen Newton Street. I thought I read that, um, it was required because the, it would be unsafe to go over that area unless it was replaced soon. So, um, would that lead to, you know, like a road closure, or it would have to be in some way, uh, not used?
The road's been closed for at least six months. Someone can correct me if it's been longer, and I think the expectation is that the road will remain closed until, um, this work can be commissioned.
I see, thank you.
We're still over here?
Andrea Hamilton, one nineteen Northborough Road. As evidenced by the name of my road, I'm pretty directly impacted by this. I'm actually a little beyond. Um, but this has been a, this, the road closure's been a pretty significant impact in my ability to do my daily commute. Do we have any sense if we are not appropriating money for this, when this project would take place or be complete?
Um, the bid, bid results literally just came in last week, so, um, I think it's post, assuming this amendment passes, um, post-town meeting, I can at least assure you that Capital Planning will take it up again, but I believe it's a broader discussion with the select board on the future of that road, and how it should be, um, commissioned.
Would the alternative be that we have to increase the number tonight if we wanted to move forward with the project? Would that be a separate motion if we wanted to continue to move forwards with it?
I, I'd, increase the number what? Sorry?
Right, right now, you're saying we have an unfavorable bid, we have a bid, we have a number, we have an amount that's being, um, that is potentially coming from ARPA, which presumably might not be available to us in the future. Could we raise this number tonight and make a motion to have the money to do the work?
We would only be able to, my understanding, and someone can correct me if I'm wrong, Brian, Valentine, I'm looking at you, we can only raise this motion, um, a certain amount, because you can't exceed the total capital budget that was proposed, um, in the original article. Therefore, you still would not have enough funding to accept the low bid if, um, someone were to propose that amendment. And it's gonna also require the passage of amendment number two.
And do we presumably lose the seventy thousand dollars that's currently available from the state?
Uh, my understanding is we have, um, some time to use that, so that's part of the investiga, investigatory stage that needs to take, take place next.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay. Um, what is the, what is the, I'm sorry, uh, Ms. Hamilton, um, what, what is the delta between thirty-eight and the bid?
Eighty-four thousand five hundred dollars.
So we would need to raise that item to a total of a hundred and forty, and I, and I would rule that out of order in terms of the scope of this article. Um, and in terms of the, um, the notice that was given to the voters in town as to what we're spending under this article. Um, that's, it's just too much. A little bit either way, but, um, anyway. We're over here, and then back over here. Sir?
Whitney Beals, ten Chestnut Hill Road. I'll just note that residents on Chestnut Hill Road and visitors to Chestnut Hill Farm are affected by the fact that Northborough Road is currently closed. A lot more traffic comes up, uh, Chestnut Hill Road than otherwise would happen if, uh, Northborough Road were reopened. Two more points. One is that I know that Chief Achilles, uh, of the fire department, has, um, told a number of us that Chestnut Hill Road is not the preferred access for emergency vehicles to service any emergency that might happen on the new subdivision at Dairy Farm Lane. Um, and I assume, though I did not ask him those questions specifically, that Northborough Road is better access for emergency vehicles. So by having Northborough Road closed, it puts a little bit more jeopardy in the folks who, than, in the brand-new houses at Dairy, uh, Farm Lane. Um, and I think I've, no, I, that, that's only, that's my last point.
Okay, thank you. Yes, over here.
Patricia Burns Fiori, ten Winter Street, Fayetteville. So the way I understand it, we're talking about not doing this because of the cost of eighty-four thousand dollars, and this is a road that's been out of commission for quite some time. I mean, I know a lot of kids used to go, use that road to go to Algonquin. We've just spent over one point one million dollars on moving an intersection and building a park on Saint Mark's land. Seems like eighty-four thousand dollars is not that big of a question to fix a road that I'm sure is used a lot more than the intersection at Saint Marks.
Ma'am, let me stop you. We're, we, we cannot, I cannot amend this article to increase it eighty-four thousand dollars. I mean, our budget is fifty-six million, so your point is taken. Maybe there's some money somewhere, but it can't be done this way tonight. That's, that's, that's the nuance here.
So how does it get, how can it get done so that that road can be fixed? Because it seems as though that's where our DPW money should be going, to fixing roads.
Yeah, so I think that's, that's a matter for, uh, to take up with the selectmen. You know, the, the town meeting tonight, can't do it, and I just moderate town meeting. You know, town meeting tonight, can't do it, and I just moderate town meeting. All right. All right, the motion on the floor is to strike Line M, as in Michael. Do you have a, a point? All right, go to the mic, please.
Karen Sokel, 16 Newton Street. Thank you, I just have one quick question. So the $38,000, will it then be saved? You know, will it be put aside for later, for, as you discuss how you're gonna come up with the funds later?
So the motion is to remove it in its entirety and not appropriate in tax at this time until we have a better plan?
Thank you.
So I, I think the translation is, it's not money we're gonna save, it's money we're not gonna take from your pocket. Yes, sir?
Al Hamilton, 35 Pine Hill Road. I'm going to do something shocking and suggest that we increase this, that we not, we vote against this motion. Were we to approve this $38,000, it is a capital item, which means it can transcend multiple years, and so that money would be available, which could then be added to if we needed more money to fix this road. So if we vote no on this amendment, then we would presumably be authorizing these funds, which would be available in the future to repair this facility.
I think that's correct. So Mr. Hamilton's point is, this is not enough to fix the road, but let's put it aside now and, and take the taxes, and, and then hopefully in the future we add to it. All right. The motion on the floor is to reduce, to strike Line M from Article 13. All in favor of that motion, please raise your cards, of that amendment, please raise your cards. All opposed? Let's just look at it one more time. All in favor of the strike and all opposed. All right, that motion ca, I'm sorry, that motion fails. So that required a majority vote, and that motion fails. So the Line M will remain in this article, and Mr. Malinowski, you had another amendment to propose?
Yep, so Amendment Two is, I move to amend the main motion by striking the words Item E, Fire Pickup Truck, Item G, Fire Portable Radios, and reducing Item F, Fire Knox Box, from $10,000 to $6,000, and additionally amending the funding source for Item N, Police Cruiser, from levy to receipts/reserved ambulance.
Does that receive a second? All right. Go ahead, Mr. Malinowski.
All of the preceding items that I just listed in that amendment are due to the efforts of the Select Board, particularly Mr. Healy, for discussions with two private schools in the town to identify gifts that are being used to pay for all or part of some of these items. Item E, Fire Pickup Truck, is being funded by the Fay School. Item G, Fire Portable Radios, is being funded by St. Mark's, and $4,000 of the Fire Knox Box are being paid by the St. Mark's School. In addition, at the time that the warrant was printed, we were also aware of a $20,000 gift from St. Mark's for Fire PPE. Well, that's not part of the amendment, it's part of the overall donation from each of those schools. As a result of those donations, mainly because the Fire Pickup Truck was scheduled to come out of the ambulance fund, which is a reserved receipts fund, we are recommending that the Police Cruiser be transferred to that as a funding source to overall, overall lower the appropriation that's coming out of the tax, the general fund, which then ultimately results in part of the equation to get to our final tax rate in town.
I'm sorry if I missed it at the beginning, but what is the, the delta then? You're, you're proposing to raise and appropriate 761-500 as opposed to what?
It's a reduction of $78,000.
That's the total reduction?
Yes.
Can you scroll up, please? Okay. Okay, okay. All right. I'll apologize because we'll be, honor system, who was first? You were first, go ahead.
Robert Reader, 4 Blendenwood Drive. Please correct me if I'm not doing this correctly, but we just reduced the total line on this item, which is what has been in contention, by 76,000. We are very close to being able to put a road back in service. So if I am correct, and I just wanted to let you know, if this motion passes, then I would propose a motion that we eliminate DP floor covering, DPW floor coverings, nothing against them, but it's a small amount, and increase the amount to be able to repair a road that, that we need to be able to use. But I won't, I just need a clarification on that.
Okay, okay. The, the logic makes sense in a vacuum. It's, it's not permissible in this, in this method to just sort of flip these things to another line item. But you, you know, again, you're certainly free to bring that up to the selectmen and, and ask them whether there's a, an appetite for shifting things around.
So, okay, if I can understand what you're saying, if we vote to keep this money in, then you're saying that the selectmen have the authority to adjust that after the fact, if they, if it makes sense, no?
No, no, because this, the warrant was printed with these items as is. So we, we don't have the ability to move money around, you know, from line, from line item to line item, if that makes sense. I, I understand the, the logic of the, of the point.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Right over here.
Again, I don't understand that logic. I mean, we, we requested a certain sum of money, let's say whatever it is, whatever the total is. We're within like $5,000 of adjusting this to allow, to transfer money from, to delete, make an amendment to delete whatever we need to delete here, and reinstall the, the funds on something else. The overall total doesn't change much.
So, for example, we requested $14,000 on Line G for portable radios, okay? Everybody who received the warrant, that's their, that's their notification, okay? We're not at liberty to say, now that we're at town meeting, well, it's not really portable radios, we're gonna throw it all over to Northborough Road. That's, it's, it's, it's not-
Isn't that the nature of an amendment?
Well, but the amendment has to be within the scope of the warrant that was put out to the public who chose or not to come to this meeting.
I'll leave it with you then, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Next, right here.
Mr. Moderator, Kelly Roney, 2 House Court. My reading of town meeting time suggests you have the discretion for the total amount of this article, and you're exercising your discretion here to rule that motion out of order.
I'm, I'm fine to, to take a look at whatever town meeting time section you're looking at, and if, if we want, I'll entertain a motion to table this article until I have a chance to do it. No, we got, at the mic here, on the, yes?
Andrea Hamilton, 119 Northborough Road. Just while we're being creative here, it seems that we are striking these because of a donation from an outside organization. If we kept these line items as is, might we return to St. Mark's and Fay Schools and ask if they would consider changing their donation to be one that applies to the road project instead of these?
That is a question for the selectmen. I, I have no idea the parameters of, of, for lack of a better word, the deal.
Understanding we probably couldn't secure that commitment tonight, but is that something that, if, if we left the money in, would there be anything preventing us from going back and asking if that donation might be revised to another item?
Again, yeah, whether the selectmen would, would decide to do that, that's up to them.
Can I pose the question to the Select Board?
Yeah, you go through me. What's your question?
Would the Select Board consider going back to St. Mark's and Finn, sorry, not Finn, Finn isn't gonna pay for this, Fay Schools, and asking if they would consider changing their donation to support the road project for the Northborough Road Culvert instead of the capital line items that they've identified here?
I'll let Mr. Healy address that.
All right, thanks, Mr. Moderator. I don't have very much optimism that that would happen, because the conversations with both St. Mark's and Fay, they have been emphatic that their voluntary donations go towards public safety-related items. That's been the case in the past several years and the like. So, I mean, can it be done? It, sure, it can be done. I don't have any optimism, though, that that suggestion is gonna be accepted.
Do they get their names on things in exchange for that?
I didn't hear.
Is there a reason? I mean, it's, it's a little disingenuous to offer what the town wants and then reject what the town wants, but that's neither here nor there, I suppose.
I'm sorry, is there a reason for what?
I'll, I'll strike the comment. Thank you.
All right. Here, and then, and then, Mr. Hamilton, and then in the back.
Mr. Moderator, John Reed, 34 Bigelow Road. My focus is on the line item for the DPW road maintenance, and appreciating the, that line item as described is, is general in nature. I'd like to know if there'd be an opportunity for the, the DPW to be able to allocate a portion of those funds for the, for the reconstruction or the rehabilitation of the, of the closed road. If someone from the DPW could speak to what that $400,000 represents, and what I'm curious to know is, if you were to line out all of, or, excuse me, line up all of these priorities with respect to road maintenance, I'd want to be assured that we're not passing up an opportunity to repair that road, say, in lieu of filling, I don't wanna say filling piles, because that can be important, but the, the point is, if you were to prioritize all of the spend, could a, a portion of that be utilized from that $400,000 addition in order to cover the difference for the, for the culvert repair? Thank you.
All right, so I think the question is, where does the 400K go for road maintenance?
Mr. Honorable, can I take that and then over here? So something new in, as you look in the wording this year that was endorsed by the Select Board, is that the Capital Planning Committee will hold one or more public meetings on the topic of how this money would be spent, prior to it being allocated to any project, prior to it going out to any sort of RFQ. So there are road maintenance monies still on deposit in the town. It typically takes about $1.5 million to get a favorable bid. This would allow us to get to a, enough economy of scale to do that. I think it would be premature to speak for, for anyone to speak tonight to how it would be allocated. However, I will offer a suggestion, based on the moderator's decision, at least for now, until he has a chance to review it, is, I think the appropriate question would be to either ask the ARPA committee or the Select Board whether they would be willing to cover the delta between the $38,000 that's remaining in the warrant and the, the low bid with ARPA funds. Town, local ARPA funds that are already within our receipt. I think that may help to get everyone the direction they wanna go.
Mr. Hamilton?
Al Hamilton, 35 Pine Hill Road. Mr. Moderator, if you are unsure as to your authority to authorize increases or decreases in a particular line item in the budget, I would respectfully suggest that we table this motion until such time as you are clear as to your authorities.
Yeah, so I, I had suggested that when Mr. Roney spoke. I do have, it's funny, funny you say that, I do have town meeting time open to motion delay. It's actually called motion to postpone to a time certain.
I would, I would move to mo, to postpone till a time certain.
Yes. That has to be, but, but I'm, I'm, I'm not gonna get away from the motion on the floor just yet, while people are at the mic. So, Ms. Cook?
I was gonna do the same thing Mr. Hamilton was doing, so I-
All right, all the way in the back.
Howard Anderson, 1 Meadow Lane. I'm trying to understand the logic of what just happened. You told me that you wanna reduce all these line items because you got donations from-
Wait, 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 who, are you addressing Mr. Malinowski?
Yes.
Okay, through me, please. What's your question?
I'm sorry. I was told just now by someone on your left that the, the line items could be eliminated because of a revelation that there were donations from people that were basically giving pilot funds. Then we're told, because there's a, because there's an old increase in the bid for a line item that you already approved for $38,000, you can't take that, can't add to that money, but you can take the other line items out. What's, what's the logic of that? There's no logic to it. If you, if you take line items from a budget, and you have a budget that's a shortfall, and you approved all the budget, then you just put it into the line item that needs the money.
Yeah, so the logic is that the, the article was presented in the warrant with the items in the table the way they were.
The way they were, and people are-
And all those donated items. Please don't interrupt me, sir. Folks are allowed to take notice of the warrant as printed and to rely that it does not deviate more than a, you know, a smidgen beyond that article during town meeting where they might not even be here, right? We come out of town meeting and say, oh, you know what, we trashed the whole table and we're just gonna fix Northborough Road. That's not in order. That's not in order.
I'm sorry, if, if you just, someone just deleted a bunch of line items because they got donations from St. Mark's and Fay School.
We actually haven't done that yet.
Is that correct?
That's what's, that's what's pending right now.
And that, and that, and those line items that you, that were deleted are now off of this warrant that was given to half the world, and now you're saying we can't deviate from that by, by putting something in? In other words, you can only take items out, you can't add?
The reason is because this is not money. This is-
It's not money?
This is future taxes. There's a difference.
But the future taxes were just eliminated by the items that were donated.
Correct, and, and there could be 1,000 people who aren't here tonight to say, yeah, that's great, I don't want my taxes to go to Northborough Road.
So, okay, you're gonna take a road that's been shut down already, and because of a point of order, in my opinion, now you're gonna shut this thing down for two more years because you're not, if, if you keep doing this, all you have to do is keep getting bids that are too high, and you'll never pay for that damn culvert.
Sir, all right, that's enough. I moderate the article. You can go to the next selectmen's meeting and ask him to do what you're asking to do, okay? I just moderate the articles in the warrant while we're here tonight. So let's go over here.
That's wrong.
Patricia Burns Fiori, 10 Winter Street, Fayetteville. Could you just scroll that down a tad?
I'm sorry.
No, down, down. No. Okay. I could be doing this out of order, I have no idea, I'm just going by what Kelly Roney told me. So I would make a motion to delete the money for line item B. I would like to see that money somehow redirected also to Northborough Road as a major DPW project instead of giving them new floors.
All right, I don't, I don't know how else to explain, that we cannot just flip these lines where we feel like they should go, okay? I am willing to read whatever Ms. Roney read.
Nope, all right, you're right. I, I make a motion to delete line item B.
You make a motion, I'm sorry, to what line item?
To delete line item B, facilities-dpw floor coverings, 15- To delete line item B, facilities-dpw floor coverings, $15,500.
You want to delete that?
I want to delete that from the budget.
So, your motion would be an amendment to Mr. Malinowski's motion to add further strikes than the ones that he's already identified.
Correct.
Okay? So, that would be a subsidiary motion that I will allow. Does it receive a second? All right. So, now, the motion on the floor is all of Mr. Malinowski's changes plus yours. All right? Question or comment? Over here. Yes, Mr. Hamilton?
The motion now is only for the DPW floor coverings, and then we move to Mr. Malinowski's.
That's not what I understood her to be saying. I asked her if she's adding hers to his.
Yes.
No, she can make a subsidiary motion to that effect. Otherwise, we've got to dispose of his before we can let her do that. So.
Am I done?
Ms. Burns Fiori, are you seeking to add a strike of line B to the proposed strikes that Mr. Malinowski already has on the floor, or do you want to wait till we dispose of his and then come back to you? I'll do it either way.
Do what? Do the latter.
Okay. Question or comment over here on Mr. Malinowski's motion?
Yep. My name is Paul Carter, 6 Hillside Avenue. I'm a civil engineer. I specialize in hydrology and hydraulics and the design of culverts and replacement of culverts. Right now, construction bids are coming in very high. Also, I would suggest, if there's a problem with the number, that it be revised. So, I would move that we indefinitely postpone this article.
All right. We have a motion on the floor. We can move to indefinitely postpone the motion on the floor.
I vote that we vote to indefinitely postpone the motion on the floor.
All right. You know, the equivalent of what you're suggesting is to move the question.
Move the question.
And then, you know, vote it down, because indefinite postponement doesn't last beyond this town meeting.
Move the question.
All right.
As a point of order?
Who's that?
Right next to you. Over here.
Yes.
I think.
Head on a swivel.
I just want to make sure that the resident is clear of, by him making that motion, it eliminates everything, to indefinitely postpone.
The entire table goes back to the way it was.
Yep.
Okay, I just want to make sure everyone's just clear on that, because I think you've got, you've got a sub, you've got, she postponed her sub amendment, and you've got the original amendment on the table.
Well, no, she took that back. She wants to do it separately. So, your motion to indefinitely postpone, or to move the question, and same thing, they both require a two-thirds vote. If you get that vote, then the table reverts to what it was when we, when the warrant was printed.
That's what I request.
Subject then to Ms. Burns Fiori's possible next amendment.
That's what I request.
Okay. So, I have, I think you were next, ma'am. All right. You want to speak to the motion to indefinitely postpone?
Hi, Gina Glasamizki, 90th and Stone Lane. This is so scary, and I need one of these for my house. I completely agree with this gentleman here. Commodities are insane right now. The amount of money that we would spend to repair this road that has already been closed, we've been leading our lives without it. I understand it's an inconvenience for many people, but to spend the amount of money that Mr. Malinowski is talking about to repair a road that we could repair for a fraction of the cost in the future is insane. I don't feel that's responsible in any way, and I would move to postpone this.
You support the gentleman's motion?
Yes.
All right. Over here, please.
Karen Sokol, 16 Newton Street. So, I'm just wondering if we vote to leave everything as it was, to vote the amendment down, but leave all the line items the way they were. So, then we're allocating these funds with our taxes this coming year. Then, can we petition the Select Board to use those funds that we know that St. Mark's and Fay School are going to pay for some of these things already? We can use those funds to pay for the culvert repair now. Maybe we could get it cheaper, you know, a few years from now.
Yeah, I think that suggestion's been made, and I think Mr. Healy spoke to his doubt that St. Mark's, who's willing to give X dollars for certain things, would still be willing to do that for other things.
No, I wasn't asking that. That wasn't what I was saying. It was that if we leave, if we leave all the line items E, G, all the ones that they're going to be paid for already, which is why they're being taken out of our list here for the taxes. But if we leave them in, can we then reallocate? So, in other words, the money will be held aside by the tax, the taxes we're going to be paying this coming year. Will that allow those monies to be used if we appeal to the Select Board for the culvert repair?
Well, I'll, you know, I'll ask town council to correct me if I'm wrong, but if this article passes with the table as printed in the warrant, those funds, those future funds will be allocated as printed in the warrant.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Roney was next, and then we'll come back over here and maybe see where we are.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Kelly Roney, 2 House Court. I really just want to ask a question. The motion to indefinitely postpone, or the other privileged motion is what we're debating? Is that right?
That's the, the motion to move the question is on the floor. That's correct.
And moving the question is moving the amendment question or the whole question?
No, the motion on the floor is the second amendment by Mr. Malinowski that strikes most things except line M. Line M was the first motion.
But, so, we're speaking to his amendment to the warrant article?
I.
If we indefinitely postpone, then we, or if we.
Then we're coming back to the main motion? That's correct. The original article.
Because I wasn't clear on that, and I'm not sure the hall is, so.
Okay.
Thanks.
That's fair enough. I'll certainly explain that before we leave this topic. Right here, and then, all the way in the back on that side will be next. Go ahead, sir.
Timfling, 18 Main Street. So, if I understand it correctly right now, what we're doing is possibly indefinitely postponing the pilot payments that we would be accepting, and this is, we would postpone the acceptance of the payment itself.
So, it's tricky, but I don't know the answer to that. What St. Mark's has offered us has caused Mr. Malinowski to ask you to take certain things off this article because St. Mark's is going to pay for them, and Finn, oh, sorry, Fay, et cetera. Whether they are still willing to do that if we defeat his amendment, I have no idea. And I'm not sure the selectmen know for sure either.
So, if we don't accept those pilot payments in the manner of this line item, those payments may or may not be on the table for the town to use later, because it's completely back to those schools.
Yeah, I'm going to let Mr. Healy answer that question.
The schools are very specific about the items they fund. They don't, they don't, they give, they give two categories of money typically. One category is roughly equivalent to taxes for properties that they have recently purchased. Those monies go into, and Brian, correct me if I'm wrong, those monies go into the general fund. They are not targeted for a specific expense, all right? Those aren't the funds we're talking about now. The funds we're talking about now are a second bucket that the schools, at least recently, have been giving. Those are targeted. They are made aware of capital items, particularly in the public safety category, that the town is putting on its roster of potential expenses for a particular fiscal year. They look at those, and they make a decision about whether or not they are interested in funding all or part of those items. They've made a number of things clear to me in conversations over the years. Number one, they're not interested in operational expense coverage, and they have not indicated an interest in expenses that go outside of the public safety area, which is why I don't have any optimism that asking them to move the funds around is going to be successful. Is that clear?
Yes. So, on that point, then, Mr. Moderator, I don't know what the exact motion is, but I, in order to accept the payments that these schools are bringing forward, I would propose that we take a vote on this now. So, I don't know what that, I guess move the question. Is that the correct way to put it?
Yeah, but I'm going to finish off the folks at the mics, but it's essentially, it's been, same thing has been offered. So, I have.
Point of order?
Right. Point of order? What's your point of order?
We have a motion to lay it on the table, and it's not debatable?
No, 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 no. We never got to that. I suggested we might do that.
Al submitted a motion. Mr. Hamilton submitted a motion to lay it on the table.
I didn't even acknowledge it or hear a second for it. So, fair enough. Right here, please, microphone C. Then, we'll go to the back to microphone D, and then we will see where we are on reverting to the original table.
She yielded to me, Robert Reader, 4 Blenden Woods. Massachusetts statute RSA 39:2, RSA 32:6, requires the purpose of any appropriation must appear in the budget or in the special warrant article. The statute adds that the legislative body may vote to appropriate more than or less than the amount recommended in the budget or the warrant article. I think we should reduce the amount of what they said to take off, get rid of B, and increase the amount for the culvert. So, I recommend approving this motion, then we'll make another motion for the other.
Okay. I don't, okay, all right. At the end, you just said approving where we are, which is to revert the table.
We have a motion on the floor to drop those items.
Yes.
Okay. I'm just recommending we approve that motion. At that point, then, I will come up, we'll make another motion to drop B and to increase the culvert.
I'm not, I'm not, we'll get to what, your second thought when we get to it. Again, we're not at liberty to flip line items in a capital article.
You are at liberty to increase it.
Let's go down here to exhibit C. I'll have town council opine on that, sir, after we hear.
Okay. Marguerite Landry, 134 Deerfoot. As I understand it, St. Mark's and Fay give pilot payments for items that are useful to them for the safety of the students in their schools, correct?
That's my understanding from Mr. Healy's remarks.
Right. So, it's not money that you could simply say, oh, do you want to do a culvert? Because they're, they have a direct interest in their contributions protecting their students and their buildings, right? I mean, I'm just saying.
I understand your point. I come back to Mr. Healy's point. He's the one who spoke to them.
Okay. So, but it wouldn't be the kind of thing where we could say, oh, we don't want a police radio. Can you help pay for our culvert? That's not, that's not how they conceive of the donation.
I think it's a fair question to put to Mr. Healy. I think he's pretty much answered it already. But go ahead, Marty.
Yeah, I'll just repeat. Again, they have articulated, over the past three years when I've spoken with them, very clearly that the items they are willing to make voluntary contributions for are public safety items. They've made it equally clear that they're not interested in, again, covering operational expenses or other items. They haven't, we haven't gotten into, we haven't drilled down and said, okay, well, why public safety? Because it goes to the safety of your students. I suspect that's a big part of their rationale, but we haven't had those discussions. But I suspect that you're right. I just can't tell you that that's what they've said to me.
Okay. And I'm not saying right, wrong, whatever, as far as their decision to do that. It just seems to me that the culvert really kind of needs to get done. Would it be possible, given what this gentleman has just said, to hold the $38,000 in this line, now anyway, for future payment for the culvert, and maybe drop the DPW floor coverings, which don't seem quite so urgent, and put it toward the culvert? It seems like the culvert should really get done. Just a question.
So, it's certainly possible to pass this with the $38,000 intact. I'm not agreeing with your next point, which is to take a line, another line, and add it to that.
Well, can we take the, it just seems the DPW floor coverings, I'm just questioning the value of that. That's all I have to say.
I don't think that's the motion on the table, Mr. Moderator. Motion on the tables.
No, the motion on the table is to.
Police and fire related only.
To the original state of it. Mr. Caleri.
Jim Caleri, 51 Central Street. I'm going to hope to clear this St. Mark's and Fay School thing up once and for all, so we don't go through this every town meeting. They give money to the pilot requirement that goes to the general account. Correct me if I'm wrong, Brian Valentine. We've all gone back to the school a number of times. I did with the committee to get $100,000 out of St. Mark's School, $100,000 out of Fay School, $120,000 out of New England Center for Children, and around $50,000 to buy a fire truck, combination of all, to buy the aerial tower 10 years ago. Lessons I learned on that. Pilot program money they'll give you, they really have to give you by law, statute, or whatever it may be. But when you come back to these other things, they have to go to their board of directors and convince their board of directors to spend money on other things. And like any one of us in life, we have financial burdens put on us. The schools likewise do. I'm sure if you go to any one of the private schools, including Harvard University, there's a staffing levels that will tell them how to spend money, more money than they have. So, they looked at public safety as a key issue for their student body. It's very easy to convince the board of directors, who probably don't live in the town for the most part, have no gain out of this themselves, to convince them to allocate this money. Obviously, the town of Southborough has gone and done it for these items. That's not a guaranteed money until we vote for it, plain and simple. I'm sure if we go back to St. Mark's, well, we're going to do this, we're not going to do that. St. Mark's may look on Fay School, and they may not. They may look and say, see you later. We gave you an offering, obviously you didn't want to take it. Thank you. Have a nice day. And they have a right to do so. Year after year at town meeting, you hear people say, we should make them do this, we should make them do that. But in fact, you cannot. And this is a simple solution. We've got a chance to take some money out. And you can't tell St. Mark's, thank you for the money you donated for public safety. Oh, but by the way, we're going to go build something else. Good luck with you. You can't do that. And just put your own personal life. You donate to the American Cancer Society for a research building. And they turn around and tell you, oh, we bought a vacation home with that in Fort Lauderdale, Florida, for our staff that are over stressed. Would you accept that? No, you wouldn't. St. Mark's and Fay School, and any of these places, and even us personally, if the town asks us to donate for some particular charity the town wants, that's where that money has to go. You just can't say, thank you, we're going to take it. You can't do that. Hopefully, this will bring this to an end.
Thank you. All right. I'll give you the last word, sir.
Yes, I hope that we'll bring this to an end. This is an inappropriate way to deal with any of these items in a budget as we've just completely discussed in the last hour, okay? I vote that the motion be indefinitely postponed, the amendment motion, and that we move the question on the full motion.
Okay. So, a motion to indefinitely postpone requires a two-thirds vote. If we pass this motion, then we will, then the amendment will have no effect, and the previous amendment is already gone. So, we will be back to the original article as printed in the warrant with all of the lines and all of the amounts. All those in favor.
Point of order?
Yes. Okay, but the motion that is specifically being made is not, so, that's correct. We're going to vote on what's in the warrant after this motion is disposed of. So, this motion is just designed to take away these changes and put it back the way it was. And then, the vote on that article will be majority. That's correct, sir. All right. I need you to go to the mic, please.
Have a nice trip, Frank. Lee Perrin, 3 Powder Mill Lane, in the warrant on page seven, line 12, subsidiary motions to postpone indefinitely, vote required, says majority.
Hold on. You're right. Motion to move a question is a two-thirds, and that was muddled in there. So, you're right. We'll take a majority vote on this amendment, and then we, if it fails, if, in other words, if the motion, the amendment fails, we'll be back to the original warrant article, and we'll take a majority vote on that.
Point of order.
Yes.
Point of order. I believe the motion that we are voting on is the motion to indefinitely postpone.
Correct.
And if we vote against the motion to indefinitely postpone, which I favor, we go back to the amendment as, and we can vote on the amendment.
That's, if it fails, then-
Indefinite postponement fails, then we got a chance to vote on the amendment.
That's correct.
So, we get two votes, and then we are open to additional amendments, such as the one Patty wants to do.
That's also correct.
Okay. So, we're voting on indefinite postponement.
The second Malinowski amendment.
No. That's not my understanding.
No, no, no. We're not voting on the amendment. We're voting to indefinitely postpone that amendment.
Right. So, if you like the amendment, vote no on indefinite postponement. And then if you like the amendment, vote yes on the amendment.
Correct.
Thank you.
Correct. Right down here.
Hi. Stephanie Idis, 12 Darlene Drive. Just a quick clarification. If we leave, if we either postpone the amendment or vote down the amendment, and those line items are left in, do we then have to go back to St. Mark's and say, "We do not want your donation"?
Well, it's, I, it's not a matter of parliamentary procedure, but I would imagine the selectman would say, "Yeah, I mean, we thought we were going to, we thought we were going to take your money earmarked for XYZ, but the town would rather be taxed and pay for XYZ."
Mr. Moderator?
Yes.
Mr. Moderator, it's actually more specific than that. The donations were given targeted for those items, so it wouldn't be us saying, "Do you want the money back?" I mean, we would have to give the money back. They could then choose to make another contribution. I'll go back to my earlier statement. I don't have a lot of optimism because of the philosophy that they use for making donations. But I think it's pretty clear that if this is indefinitely postponed, again, there's always the possibility the money can come back, but if this is indefinitely postponed, what's my quick math? $30,000 plus $18,000, $48,000 will be, no, six-
$78,000.
$78,000 will be gone.
So, if we would like to accept these donations, we would need to vote down the postponement and vote to approve Mr. Malinowski's amendment? Thank you.
Yes.
Yes. Gentlemen in front.
Howard Anderson, 1 Meadow Lane. I'm struggling with this because I'm too logical. If you, I'm advocating getting the donations from the schools. I want to be clear about that. I think that's a great idea to get those donations, and I think you should take them as soon as you can and get them as quick as you can. But what I'm still struggling with is what is your vehicle, now that you don't have those numbers in this original line item, where does that money go if you accept the money from St. Mark's? Does it go into a sinkhole?
No. So, again, this table, this table is, is a future levy, meaning if we take the money from St. Mark's and we reduce this table, it's not money in the bank that we just put back in the bank. It's, your taxes go up a little less.
Okay. Let me ask a question. We're at town meeting because we're allowed to have a vote of what we think the town should do. So, if we say to the town, "We want to keep all the money that you're willing to appropriate for the future, and if someone gives you money in the future, we can take that money and put it into another line item."
Yeah. So, I think that was suggested some time ago, that we, if we go back to the original table, there'll be $38,000-
Yeah.
-for Northborough Road.
Right.
And that money could, you know, the taxes would be taken out for that, and it would be available for Northborough Road. It's just, right now, it's not enough. But yes, it would be allocated therefore.
Right. But I think we've determined it's not enough by a very small amount of money, $10,000, $15,000. So, it, logic says to me, I think the hall wants to do the culvert, and I think the hall wants to take the money from the schools because they're willing to give it to us. So, I don't understand why we're agonizing over the fact that we want to get a culvert done and get the donations. Where's the problem? We don't want to ask them to donate to the culvert. We never, somebody started talking about it, and it just took, you know, took a life of its own. We just want to get the culvert done, and we want to get the donations. Simple to me. I just don't know, I'm not slick enough to understand how you can work this around and make it work. Please, please help us so we can make a good decision.
Over here.
Andrew Pfaff, 500 Kill Road. To answer a little bit of your question, I think the issue is notice. And the issue is, we cannot increase the dollar amount without giving notice to the town. The moderator has some flexibility on that, but on this one, it's very difficult. Now, if we, if we indefinitely postpone Mr. Malinowski's amendment, what we're basically going to do is collect the money from the taxes. We will also collect the money from the schools. We could spend the school money on those items, and then at the end of the year, we will have that money left over in those capital items. It can only be spent on those items, and we could close out those capital items and return that money to free cash. So, basically, we're going to be collecting additional taxes that we're not going to spend, and then we're going to close it out and return it. It just makes zero sense of, you know, approve his emotion, turn down the indefinite postponement, and, you know, get the money from the schools, lower our tax bills, and we could have a fall town meeting, and we could add $84,000 to the Northborough Road culvert, or we could use road finances, or we could use ARPA, or we could use chapter 90 funds. Like, all that is within the selectman's purview. Let's take it up there. It can't be done here. Thank you.
Thank you. Same side.
Patricia Burns, Fiori, 10 Winter Street, Bayville. I'm just looking for a little clarification from something Mr. Healy said.
Man, I apologize, ma'am. Maybe take, take your hand down.
Oh, sorry.
I can't hear you. Go ahead.
I said, "I'm looking for a little clarification of something Mr. Healy said." He said that this money had been received from the schools. I forget the exact wording, but that it was a past tense issue, and I was wondering if you could clarify that, because I spoke to Mr. Valentine two days ago, and he said no money had been received to date from St. Mark's or Fay School, only from the New England Center for Children. And he had nothing in writing that that money was to be coming. So, when you said it's received, what exactly did you mean?
So, you're questioning my tenses?
I am. I mean, we have to be specific and literal here, don't we?
I'm pretty good with them. I think it, was it yesterday, Brian, it came in?
Today.
It was today. Today, yeah.
So, there was-
Earlier today, so past tense is correct.
So, a check was received-
Yes.
From the time I spoke to him.
From Fay, yes.
Okay. But not St. Mark's?
No.
And was the check from Fay for the full amount, or is it like the fire truck where it was $10,000 a year over 10 years?
The amount of money received today from Fay was $30,000, which was the commitment they made, to pay $30,000 this June, $30,000 in the next fiscal year.
Okay. So, it was $30,000 a year for two years. It's not $60,000 for this year to pay for the truck, right?
No, it is, because the, all of the money will come in, in fiscal year '23. That's the way they struck, that is why they structured the payments that way, so that it can pay for the truck.
Okay.
Right down here, please. And then I'm going to go to the gentleman behind you, and then, and then we're going to, no, go right ahead, ma'am.
Sandy Cohen, 32 Maple Crest Drive. Everyone has had so much input here, and it's all very interesting and important. And it seems to me, two things. I'm confused about one of the things. I thought a while ago someone made the motion to table this, and I thought, when you make a motion to table, that's not debatable. And it just seems to me this needs to go back to the drawing board at this point. There's, people want you to do things that you really can't do at this, at this meeting. So, it seems to me that we need to go back and revisit all of this. How to allocate, what to do, how to move things around, which you can't do at this meeting.
So, to preserve the status quo with this, with this amendment intact, we would defeat the motion to indefinitely postpone. We'd come back to this amendment, and then we would table.
So, so, the motion to table or to postpone?
There's no motion to table.
There wasn't?
Ha ha, on the table.
Okay. I thought there was a motion to table.
No. Apparently, there was, it was a mention of it. I didn't hear it, and it was withdrawn in any case. All right, one more, and then we'll, we'll review.
Mr. Moderator, following the discussion, one thing I think I gleaned from that, from the, from the discussion, and a point you had made about the intent of this particular type of, of resolution is to not move more than a smidgen from what was already budgeted here on these line items. If that's the case, then I'm still struggling to understand how we can make that deduction. I think it's, I can't read it, $38,000 or so, plus or minus, for the culvert restoration. And I'll be mindful of the comment you had made about those residents who are not here this evening, that for the thousands of residents who are not here, they're, they're anticipating that that $38,000 is, is being allocated in the, in the form of a tax levy specifically for the purpose of that culvert. And if it were to be struck as a result of this amendment being proposed, that would seem to be counterintuitive to that spirit and what you had pointed out, Mr. Moderator, as the intent to try to not move beyond much more than a smidgen. Thank you.
Yeah. I mean, smidgen's in the eye of the beholder, but it's not much. By the way, 38 is in, is in the table right now. It's not part of Mr. Malinowski's Second Amendment.
Mr. Moderator?
Yes.
Can we just ask Mr. Montijo to actually add that back in? I think that is causing a massive amount of confusion.
You mean physically in the document.
The motion failed to amend it, so.
No, I'm fine with that.
Because I think we're-
Can we remove the red line from line M, please?
People are confusing, I think, the DPW item with the fire and police items.
And over here, capital M. Okay. Okay. So, what's on the screen now is the, is the current state of Mr. Malinowski's Second Amendment. What we have before us now is whether to indefinitely postpone his Second Amendment, or to defeat it, and then come back to it and take whatever action we may want to take at that point. And I have nobody at the mics, so I will call for the vote on the motion to indefinitely postpone. If you are in favor of indefinitely postponing, meaning, you know, the table would revert to what it was when we walked, when we first put it up there, please raise your cards. All opposed? Okay. So, we are back now to what you see on the screen, and, you know, if anybody has a further comment or question of what you see on the screen, I'll, I'll give it a little latitude. I think we've kind of made our wishes clear here. So, but just to explain it one more time, Mr. Malinowski's changes represent offers by the schools to donate those sums instead of having to tax us. That's, that is, you know, sort of the, the bottom line explanation for why these edits have been made. And I think, I think we're, I think we understand that. And seeing no other question or comment, Mr. Malinowski's amendment that you see on the screen requires a majority vote. If you are in favor of these changes, please raise your cards. All opposed? Okay. Get ready for this. Mr. Malinowski's amendment passes, now we have to vote on Article 13 as amended. So, we're not quite done yet. All right. At the mic.
Patricia Burns, Fiori, 10 Winter Street, Bayville. When do I make the motion to delete line B floor coverings for $15,500? Or, I just made that motion, I guess.
Well, you can make that motion right now.
I make a motion to delete line B facilities, DPW floor covering, in the amount of $15,500 from that table.
Okay. And that would, that would delete the item from this table. But to be clear, it doesn't have anything to do with whether that would be, you know, somehow taken out of your taxes some other way and spent in a certain way.
I understand that.
Okay. It's not money in the bank.
Just not spending it on floor cover.
It's future taxes. So, we have a second. Any comment or question on that motion?
Okay, sorry. Ma'am, you do have to come up and put that motion in writing.
You know, what I see going on right now-
Right down front.
Is a lot of petty bickering on individual things.
Wait, wait, wait. Sir, sorry. Name and, name and address.
Joe Palmer, 158 Parkerville.
Okay, go ahead.
Does anybody know why they're looking for new floor coverings in the DPW? Did anybody bother to ask? People sought up there, got pissed off, and said, "We need to get rid of this because it's $15,000." Why doesn't somebody ask the question? There could be health reasons why they have it. I mean, these guys work out in conditions all day long. I mean, they, who knows what they're tracking around? Do you know whether that's to help reduce germs or contaminants in the DPW? Before we're making these choices, I think we should put in enough time, whether before the meeting, finding out why, or in the meeting, asking why, before we're just trying to juggle these things around. And we can find other ways to do things, but we seem single-track minded about how this has to be done in the moment. Jason already said, "If you want more funds," there are money, there's money in ARPA for sidewalks. If you want to divert that to a road, you can go to a meeting. Go to the select board and ask. There are ways to make things happen. We happen to have the ARPA slush fund this year. We don't normally. Everybody in the town seems to want a slush fund when they want it and not a slush fund when they don't. Okay? We're at town meeting. We're trying to debate these things thoughtfully. I wish people would think a little bit more before we go into conjecture on all these sorts of things, okay?
Okay, thank you. How we doing down there? Yeah, I mean, I, unless I misunderstood her, it's just a red line through line B, right? And while you're at it, Jason, all the other red lines you could delete, they're, they're gone. Yeah, we passed, we passed those changes. So, fire pickup truck is gone. Fire portable radios are gone. You could. I think the implication of passing this current motion is to reduce the 761 number by that amount. Okay, Jim, can we sit with this? So now, the motion on the floor is to strike line B. And I ha, I see one person at the mic, please go ahead.
I, I'm going to speak after this, I'm just getting ready.
I'm sorry?
I, I'm going to speak after the vote. I'm just...
Okay. Any other question or comment about the motion on the floor, which is to strike line In the front and then right behind, go ahead.
Me?
Yes, yes, sorry, yes.
Will Warren, six Sunrise Drive. I would just like to have someone explain what the floor coverings involve and why they're being funded.
Okay.
I will start, and if Mr. Parent wants to add anything, I would ask him to come up. But this item has been on the Capitol Plan since the Capitol Plan, Capitol Planning Committee was formed over two years ago. This item is, one item that we believe is deferred maintenance. They are well beyond their useful life. And when we look at Capitol Planning opportunities, we look at short, medium, and long-term items. We believe this is a short-term item that impacts the health and wellness of the, the employees that work in that building, and therefore, that's why it was presented in the warrant, as is.
Okay. You don't have to add to that, Mr. Parent, unless you want to.
I want to add, once I find your button. Okay. Actually, I think it's important to point out as well that the carpets we're speaking of are approximately thirty years of age. Now, I don't think there's anyone in this room that would have thirty-year-old carpets in their own homes. Now imagine putting that in an area where hundreds of people are walking through each day with brake dust and grease on their feet. This is something that is well past its time, and it does need to be addressed at this point. We've pushed it off before, and we're really at the point, it's, it's a must now. There are just certain things that need to be done, and this is one of them. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Yes?
Al Hamilton, thirty-five Pine Hill Road. This should never have actually even been on this agenda. We have a capital maintenance fund that was authorized by town bylaw and is funded every year to keep things like this off, to provide our facilities' people with the funds they need to take care of items like this. Now, we tragically underfund that every year, but there are six figures in this fund, and I would respectfully suggest that this item should not be before town meeting. It should have been funded through our Building Capital Maintenance Fund, which we've had now for years and which, for some reason, people seem reluctant to spend.
Thank you. Any other comment or question? All right, so the motion on the floor is to strike line B from the current form of the article. This requires a majority vote. All those in favor of the motion to strike line B, please raise your cards. All opposed? All right, motion fails, so we could take the red line off line B. And we are back to, let's get them off first. This is now the state of play for this article. Unless somebody has something new, Mr. Hamilton, go ahead.
Hamilton, thirty-five Pine Hill Road. So, the question I have, my understanding is, is that this hall may raise or lower a budget line item at its substantial discretion. And that discretion is only limited by the moderator's willingness to entertain that motion. And so, I would request that the moderator inform us as to exactly what he means by a smid. You know, I'm, I'm sorry, I, I hesitate to be...
You know what? It's too small, and I regretted using that word. But look, if you, if you said raise or lower, right, so you've got fifteen, five, you want to make it sixteen, I'm fine with it, right? But if you want to take forty off of line C and try to throw it down onto line G, that's a, that's a whole different can of worms.
No, I'm not, I don't wish to take it from one budget and put it into another, but were I to make a motion to raise line, I believe it's M, the, the culvert money, to increase it by some fifty thousand dollars, would you find that motion in order?
No, I don't. It's more than double what it already is. Right? And again, we, and we've heard that there are, there are numerous other ways to get mu, get that money, especially today.
So you, you would rule that as out of order?
I would rule that, a motion to more than double one of these lines out of order. Yes, I would.
In that case, there's, there's no reason for me to, to proceed. Thank you.
Mark Davis, thirteen Skyler Drive. Just so Mr. Healy has an easier time explaining what happened tonight to St. Mark's and Fay School, could you take the little red lines off of E and fire pickup truck and the next one down so that they see that they're black? We did vote for them, we just voted a reduced amount on one of them, and we have it in black. The other ones, we just gave zero to them.
I, I don't think, that's, that's not correct. We, these are intact now.
Right, but you've, you've crossed out sixty thousand dollars. We took that money out of there.
Right, we crossed out being taxed by sixty thousand dollars because we're going to get sixty from one of the schools.
Correct.
Right.
But I, I, we're still getting the fire pickup truck.
Yes.
So don't redline that. Make that black. And make the other one black, so it's easier that everyone understands. We didn't eliminate the truck, we're just getting it funded differently. It's a simple request, that's all.
Yeah, I, I'm not, I'm not sure you're changing the substance of what we've done here by doing that. And you're, and you're introducing confusion because this is, this is tax allocations.
I, I, I get it, but we're still getting the trucks. So just leave those black. The rest is fine.
We're getting a truck, but we're not getting a truck via Article thirteen anymore. We're getting it because they're giving us money. So that's not what this is anymore.
Fine.
Point of order?
Yes.
Move the question, please. Please, let us vote and move this question. We're going to be here until the next one.
The motion has been made to move the question. What, what that does is it cuts off all further debate. It requires a two-thirds vote. If it passes, we move to an immediate vote on the article on the floor, on the motion on the floor. So, what you're doing if you pass Ms. Jazinski's motion is you are saying, "We're done talking." We still have to then have a final vote, okay? But if, but if, if you feel like we're done talking, then you would vote in favor of Ms. Jazinski's motion. So, requires a two-thirds. All those in favor of moving this question, please raise your cards. All opposed? All right, that motion carries. We go immediately now to a vote on Article thirteen. All those, this is a majority vote, all those in favor, please raise your cards. All opposed. Article thirteen as amended passes. Article fifteen, lucky Mr. Malinowski.
He's stuck with me for a while. For Article fifteen, I moved that the town appropriate two million dollars to pay costs of replacing water lines and making water delivery improvements to Newton Street, East Main Street, and Main Street, in that to meet this appropriation, fifty-one thousand one hundred and thirty-six shall be transferred from borrowed funds remaining from the completion of water improvements authorized under Article four of the warrant of the two thousand nine annual town meeting. Nine hundred and twenty-five thousand four hundred and fifty-eight shall be transferred from borrowed funds remaining after the completion of water improvements authorized under Article nine of the warrant at the two thousand fourteen annual town meeting, and that the treasurer, with the approval of the Select Board, is authorized to borrow one million twenty-three thousand four hundred and six dollars under and pursuant to General Law, Chapter forty-four, Section seven, one, or Section eight, five, or pursuant to any other enabling authority and to issue bonds or notes of the town therefore.
Does it receive a second? Mr. Malinowski?
I will point out that this is to replace a nineteen thirty-one water main on Newton Street in the portions of East Main Street. You will note that the amount that I motioned for the gross amount before the, the various items was two million, not the two-point-six-six-three you see on the screen here. The reason for that is the opposite story of what we just talked about in Northborough Road. We have a favorable bid in hand that came in, as you can tell, significantly under the estimated project cost. Happy to take any questions.
All right, so the motion on the floor, reduce the appropriation to two million dollars, can we make that? Nope?
Point of order? So are we voting on Article fifteen as it stands, or you've just now made a motion to reduce the amount?
I, in my motion, I motioned with two million, and I articulated the funds, so that just needs to be updated. There's no amendment. That's the motion I put on the floor.
Yeah, it's a nuance. An article is what's in the warrant and tells people what's happening here, and then a motion to put the article on the floor within certain parameters can deviate from that. So, do we do it? What are we doing? Okay.
Karen Sokel...
All right. Comments or que, which receives a second, comments or question, right over here?
Point of order, yep. Karen Sokel, sixteen Newton Street, Southborough. What is the reason to reduce it? And the comment I was going to make was that on Newton Street, the water is brown. We really need this work done.
So, good news, hopefully this will replace the brown water. And even better news is we actually have a bid in hand that qualifies under Massachusetts General Law that came in significantly lower. That's why we went lower. It's good news all around.
Al Hamilton, thirty-five Pine Hill Road. Could you clarify the source of the funding to repay this loan? Is it, does it come from water receipts or the general fund?
Water.
Thank you. Other comments, other questions? Because this is a borrowing article, it requires a two-thirds vote. All those in favor of Article fifteen, please raise your cards. All opposed. Article fifteen passes. I declare a two-thirds majority. Article sixteen, Mr. Malinowski?
I move the article as printed in the warrant.
Does it receive a second? All right, it does. Go ahead and explain.
I'd ask that Mr. Montijo or Ms. Hale bring up my presentation. I know I've already introduced myself, but I'm speaking to this article as the Chair of the NEARI School Building Committee, which was newly formed by the Select Board approximately two months ago, that consists of members of many elected and appointed boards in town, as well as members at large that are appointed by the Select Boards. The ask tonight relates to a nine-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar feasibility study to solution what to do with the NEARI school, whether it be renovations, remodeling, or new construction. Some brief history of how we got to this point. The NEARI school opened in nineteen seventy. It had its last major renovation in two thousand. For any of you that are much newer to town, like myself, as I learned and went through this project, that was the time that every other school saw significant capital expenditures or construction. This was the only school that really wasn't touched at that time from a capital improvement perspective, other than to add some modular classrooms in the rear of the building. It had some improvements in two thousand six related to boilers in particular. However, the Capital Planning Committee was formed in March of two thousand twenty. We quickly focused in on school capital and noticed a number of items for NEARI. I think as, has been well documented, the town also has corresponding capital needs, and we formed a subcommittee that committed, consisted of a member of advisory, a member of capital planning, and a member of your elected school committee. We went through numerous enrollment studies, feasibility studies, related specifically to assessing the current condition of the facilities and how long it would be until it would be unsafe to inhabit for staff and students. We commissioned a internal space need studies based on the enrollment studies, which candidly varied about projections, which is always a point of contention when you're looking at these, and really came to a conclusion, in formal recommendation as part of that subcommittee, in working with a recommendation to the Southborough School Committee, which was voted on, that we can go from four schools from the pre-K to eighth-grade level if we do something to the infrastructure that exists at the NEARI school. Corresponding to that, one month later, we were one of eleven schools in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts that was accepted into the eligibility period by the Mass School Building Authority. There was over a hundred applications received. Furthermore, you usually don't get in on your first round. So regardless of where you vote tonight, I hope you'll take away the work of the school administration in the, in the thought that went in from outsiders looking into the town that do this for a living, that we really do need to do something with this facility. Where we're at here tonight is requesting this feasibility funding, which I'll walk through what it covers, because it's nothing, it's far more than just what it sounds like. The reason we are appropriating and requesting appropriation that would be subject to bonding, which will require a two-thirds vote, which we'll get to, is because the Mass School Building Authority, as part of the eligibility period, requires the town meeting get the appropriation upfront to conduct the studies. That will be necessary, including but not limited to all of the construction documents that would be required for an actual construction project in the future if one were to be recommended. This is a eighteen-month to twenty-four-month recommendation. This is not a two-month, you know, couple pieces of paper. How do we come up with the nine-hundred-and-fifty? Well, it's based on what every other school in the Commonwealth has used, and we did some median and mean averages over the past six years. This is all based on publicly available data. That number will show you that the median of that was about nine-hundred-and-fifty-seven thousand dollars. Those are using projects from as far back as two thousand fifteen. We will also, as part of our analysis as a building committee, consider the existing infrastructure at Finn, Woodward, and Trotter, as we look through the results that come out of any NEARI feasibility study. Will also allow us to look at the school operational budget to understand if there are savings that can be used to fund any capital that may be needed. I've listed out here all the documentation that would come out of this proposed appropriation in the feasibility study. Ultimately, I want to leave you on this slide that this is going to lead to a recommendation of the most cost-effective and educationally appropriate preferred solution. By voting yes for this tonight, you are not voting to fund a construction project. You're voting for a building committee to bring back all options that were considered and what the preferred path forward is. Many of you remember I sat here not too long ago for the Public Safety Building, pitching pretty much the same thing, except it was construction and feasibility all at the same time. I think you know that this community, of which eight of us currently appointed, and we have up to nine members that can be appointed, will have full and transparent oversight over this process. All invoices, project scope will not only be approved by us, but also by the Mass School Building Authority on every step of the way. It's also worth pointing out that this nine-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars is subject to a thirty-eight percent potential reimbursement if we are to move forward to the feasibility study. We can't move forward to the feasibility phase of the MSBA process until we have town meeting funding for the gross amount. The gross amount is nine-hundred-and-fifty thousand. However, we expect the cost to Southborough taxpayers, if every penny was expended, which we hope is not the case, to be five-hundred-and-eighty-nine thousand. It's also worth noting, given that we spent a lot of time on the budget and other capital articles tonight, that given the fact that this would be bonded and would take eighteen to twenty-four months to complete, we expect zero impact of this on the F- 24 months to complete, we expect zero impact of this on the FY '23 budget and all of the tax rate projections you've heard to date. It's also important to note what I've already said, but it's worth repeating because I know will come up in question. Any construction costs, whether it be a simple repair, whether it be a remodel, whether it be a renovation, or whether it be new construction, is subject to a vote of a future town meeting. That is not what we're here to debate tonight. What we're here to debate tonight is whether we should advance and start to look at our options for this school. Many have come to us and said, "Well, I have an easy solution. It clearly needs work. Just close NEARI." I mentioned earlier, we can debate all we want about enrollment projections. I'm coming to you with facts tonight. If the school administration, under the direction of the school committee tomorrow, closed the NEARI school, we can't fit more than two grades into the Woodward school. We would violate the building occupancy permit, no matter what grade permutation you put in there. Think about that. That's current enrollment. We all know things change over time. While we're hopeful that there's not a sudden influx that, you know, dramatically impacts our enrollment, it is a possibility, and we need to be ready and flexible because you just can't stand a building up overnight. I also want to comment on one other item that this doesn't fund. As part of this process, the Capital Planning Committee has also been looking at if, and that's a big if, a school were to become available, which would be Woodward is our potential expectation, does it actually have use? That's a really important question to know whether it could have use that will inform how we move forward as a town. It's no secret that our seniors want a new senior center. It's no secret that our library needs work. I believe Mr. Donovan mentioned the community support for renovation. And it's no secret that we need to invest in our school infrastructure to keep it safe for the students. All of these can't happen. It's just physically impossible from a financial perspective. So what our goal here is with this is to understand what we can do, what is possible given the campus that exists at NEARI, and come back to town meeting with a recommendation that can be debated at that time. I'm going to leave you with this fact. We know the roof needs to be done. It should have probably been done already this year. We know the windows need to be replaced. We know that the ceiling panels need to be replaced. Those total costs escalated to present time are approximately $4.2 million. If we were just here presenting that article tonight and asking you for 4.2 million just to keep the building open, we would be spending 420K to 630K just to do the engineering and design related to that work. That number, especially if we ended up on the higher end, is actually more than what we are expecting to have to pay as Southborough taxpayers to get a far more comprehensive plan, because, at least in my opinion, we were somewhat shortsighted with some of what we did back in 2000. And I believe my, my job as a member of the NEARI Building Committee, and I hope I speak for everyone else, is to make sure that we have a comprehensive plan that can last us for 30 to 50 years. That, I'll take any questions. Mr. Moderator.
Thank you. Comments or questions about Article 16? One in the back, two, and then down front here, three. Go ahead, sir.
Thank you. Alan Belniak, 5 Boswell Lane. That 38% potential return, if things go favorably, is frankly pretty attractive. Based on prior data from the other studies you used to come up with the 950K, what is the general likelihood that we would actually get that?
As long as we advance into the next phase feasibility, it's very likely. That's the guidance we have. The 38% is specifically derived based on a formula that the state and the MSBA do related to, specifically to Southborough. Be honest, we have one of the lowest reimbursement rates in the state, based on per capita income as one of the main drivers of that.
Mr. Moderator, follow-up question?
Yes, go right ahead.
So just what drives the, if we move into the feasibility stage, then we get that? Like, is it anything in our control, or is it just, it's more of a rubber stamp that we've done our job with that first portion?
Most likely, it's a timing question. Some of the main drivers to get into that phase are already complete. For example, we already have a building committee. Sometimes people wait a little longer. They have 270 days to complete it. One of the main drivers is support of this article tonight. That would be the one thing that would potentially remove us from the process if we don't get the funding. And the final item is completion of an educational plan, which has already been drafted as part of the statement of interest that got us to this point. So that is well within our control.
Thank you.
Thank you. All the way in the back.
Andrew Mills, 2 McNeil Drive. If I can ask Jason through the chair, just clarification on scope of the feasibility study. So I want to, I want to make sure I understand it correctly. It's going to look at the schools in Southborough only and how to, how we can best utilize those. Now, the piece that you mentioned about other town departments, or whether or not we move the Art Center up there, or anything else, that is not included? That'd be something we'd look at internally as a town, or it's going to be in the study?
Zero dollars are appropriated to that.
Okay, so the study is just to look at the schools, for the kids, what the best use is for the land, the buildings that we have? And if they come up with, hey, we should consolidate everything at NEARI, build something new, and you're going to have an extra building, then we'd look at, what do we do with the extra building?
That's correct.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Tim Fling, 18 Main Street. I have a question, and then I have a couple of comments, if I may. Question for clarification is there was a $3.9, I believe, million dollar amount on the presentation for what the roof and the window, or the roof would cost? Is that accurate?
That's correct.
Is there not already a $2 million allocation for roof and window repair in one of the budgets?
No. It's in the capital plan, but it wasn't in the capital article we just voted.
Okay, so it's in a future article to come forward at another time?
Correct. So we're not proposing any repairs, remodeling, or new construction with this article. We're trying to bring forward a comprehensive plan of how to accomplish it and make it a safe school that meets the educational needs within some sort of financial constraint.
But there is a $2 million number that's in a capital plan that is estimated to go to windows and a roof cost that this slide is addressing?
Yeah, the, the total, the 3.5 is directly from a report done by Vertex Companies in April of 2021. That 3.5 addresses all things that need to be done in the next three years. Roof being the major component of that, but windows and other items being subcomponents. We've been advised, I think it's well documented, to add about a 20% inflation since that was done, especially for roofing, which is how we get to the 4.2 million dollars.
But that money, you said in the next couple of years, has to be spent regardless if we would move forward or not move forward with a project at NEARI long-term. So are we going to spend capital money in the future, two or three years, at $2 million or more, to make the building, or to continue its occupancy while anything else would go on if we would approve the money today to do the study and then proceed forward?
The goal is no. That's why it's so important to keep moving.
Okay. So the comments that I had, the overall cost of the school project, which I'm not against, but the, if you look at the community, at least my small area, we have about 30% houses have turned over in the last three years. Younger families have moved in, a lot of potential kids joining the, the area. So I kind of want to look at the long-term plan. COVID has drastically changed numbers, and it's hard to have any actual data today, of historic data anyway. We have about maybe a year of semi-normality within town that we could kind of look at. So we don't really have a long runway here of data to look at, and I know we have two or three years going from there. But this overall project, it's going to cost around $65 million to rebuild the school. MSBA would repay about $11 million of that number. So we would have to vote in the future at a $65 million number taxpayers would have to approve, and then hope that we get the maximum reimbursement from MSBA. I think that this is a good idea to do long-term, but today, I think it's not the right time to do it. I think we should go into the feasibility study maybe at a future town meeting a couple of years from now, once the COVID data comes out further and we can look at our population better. Thank you.
All right, thank you. We're going all the way in the back. That's, yes, Roger. And then down here, ma'am, and then across over here.
Roger Chalan, 29 Oak Hill Road. I'll try not to break the mic this time. I think people know I'm the Chair of the Southborough School Committee, but this is not a school committee prod, project, so I'm speaking strictly as a citizen. And through the chair, I've taken an interest in ADA issues for many, many years through the chair. It doesn't look like, Jason, you spoke to that last paragraph on the slide, which I think is pretty important for the town to understand.
You're absolutely right, Mr. Chalan. I have been up here for a while. So if you look at the latest appraisal, which is done by our town assessor, the NEARI building itself and the accessory structures that I talked about in the back are valued at $8.5 million. If you take the $4.2 million projection of just the known repairs, it is likely to trigger multiple code compliance items that would require ADA compliance, fire suppression, amongst many other things that I'm sure the building commissioner could speak to all night long. But we've been very focused on the ADA piece in particular. I think it's been well documented, the needs of multiple buildings in town. But just go walk around NEARI. Sometime, if you're in, if we ever can open up the schools fully and get beyond COVID, you'll notice that, I'm going to give you a simple example. The entrance to a single bathroom, you could not even fit a wheelchair into that bathroom right now. And by the way, there's cinder blocks on both sides of it, based on the construction. The built, I'd want to be in that building if a natural disaster came through from a structural component, maybe not the roof, but moving those walls are going to expose many things that we know were in 1970s construction, including asbestos. So something that may seem simple like widening a doorway is not like widening a doorway in our homes or in the way we do construction today. So I just think that's an important point, Roger, and thank you for the reminder.
Okay, right here.
Mimi Lutral, 19 Oregon. How did advisory vote?
It looks like three to two in support.
Well, let's, three, two, one.
Oh, sorry.
So three, two, one. Andrew Fav had to abstain because he's on the NEARI Building Committee, so three, two, one.
And why did the two who voted against vote against?
Mr. Martell is going to address that.
If we, can, can you hear me? If we are now a three-school town, then, to put it simply, we have two choices ahead of us. We close Woodward or we close NEARI. If you close NEARI, it costs us nothing to keep Woodward open. It's a brand-new, almost brand-new school. We're about, almost finished paying for it. If you close Woodward, you're looking at a 60-plus million dollar project. So while it's understandable from a functional perspective, while the schools would prefer to have NEARI open, and I do understand that, when you look at the financial impact on the town of adding a $60 million bond, and what that will do to some of the more vulnerable members of our community, it doesn't make sense to spend a million dollars to try to decide whether or not we want to spend $60 million a couple of years later.
Okay, thank you. We're over here. Both folks at this mic are next. Joe Palmer, 158 Parkerville again. I, I think it's worth everybody here understanding that this is not a vote just about schools, okay? There are lots of other considerations going into the eventual decision for another school. I serve on Capitol. I'm in ARPA. I serve on 21 Highland. Take 21 Highland, for instance. It was in the space needs report. And if you look at the space needs report that was put out over this past year, our town is crucially deficient in space for many of the, many of the occupants of 21 Highland and other offices in town. When we look at this decision, we also need to realize that it gives us the opportunity to realign our facilities in town to a new base, okay? If we build a new school at NEARI, which is a decision we can make and understand better after this study, if we do that, we could take Woodward, which is going to come off bond and be available, and they can release it from the school, from the school system, that would fully serve the needs of space in this town for the next 15 to 20 years. We can move everything from 21 Highland, everything from the community center and other offices that are overloaded into that building, jettison properties that are going to cost us money. We're going to have to put money into 21 Highland within the next couple of years, the same way we're doing with NEARI. It's going to need a new roof or something else to it. We're talking about money that's, that could be million dollars at a throw, okay? When we're doing this analysis and we're thinking about whether we want to build a new school at NEARI, it's not just about that. We can use it as a realignment of facilities in this town to adjust to a newer cost basis that we can manage, where we can understand the cost moving forward, bond them out, and understand what they're going to be better over the next 15 to 20 years. Okay? Thank you. Same side. Then in the back, and then down here.
Good evening. Julie Connolly, 26 Granual Road. First of all, I just want to commend the committee for getting us to this point where we're even able to be selected for this program, which was obviously very competitive and clearly a lot of thought and care has gone into these initial planning phases. So I just want to thank you for that. Anyone who has been in NEARI recently, or probably at any time in the past 30 years, knows that it's not just cosmetic updates that's needed, and it's not just a roof and windows that are needed. That's, that's not going to get us at all where we need to be. Also, I want to reiterate the point that closing NEARI would not solve our problems because we do not have enough physical space within the remaining three schools to accommodate the children that we have now, or the children that we're going to have in the coming years. So that, that is not a good option. And as Mr. Palmer just pointed out, it also is, is narrow, and that it doesn't look at the bigger picture of the other facilities that we have in town and the repairs that are going to be needed for those. So I do support moving forward with this feasibility study. I think this is an opportunity that we should not pass up as a community, and I think it'd be shortsighted and negligent for us to forego this opportunity to, to move into the next phase and hopefully revise and, and upgrade and modernize NEARI for the future. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, this side, all the way in the back.
Howard Rose to Bantry. I agree. I like the idea of the feasibility study. I'm hung up on the almost million dollars. Looking for some clarification, did you mention that we weren't only doing a feasibility study, we were required to do construction drawings as well as part of this feasibility study?
Yes, you're required to get the full amount that you may need to come back to town meeting with a construction project, depending on what the scope of that construction project is. That doesn't mean that the committee can't make a tough decision along the way to stop or halt or redirect work, mainly probably because it's going to come from direction of the MSBA before we even get to that point, of, of what we need to do to get to that point. So our requirement is to get the full possible funding to get us to a future town meeting where we could present a project. That's the goal tonight. It does not mean we need to spend it.
Yes, follow-up question, please.
Go ahead.
That was my idea. Do we have to do full, to what level of construction drawings? Schematic, full, full as-built? How far do we have to go? And is it possible to phase this work? So why we may have to fund it tonight and not spend it if we don't have to? It just seems to be a, a large amount of money for nothing more than a piece of paper when we're done.
So we can't phase the upfront funding. What we can phase is how we use the money. And we're a public body. We're required to meet in open session. There should be no need to have an executive session. I can't foresee any need to have any conversations outside of a public body. What I can commit to, as the Chair of that building committee, at least until June of 2023, when my appointment is up again, is that we will be transparent with the process and listen to you, the constituents. But we also need to be cognizant of how MSBA views these projects, and they want to see that the community's willing to support going that far if the facts dictate.
Thank you.
All right, here.
John Reed, 34 Bigelow Road. I'll, I'll bring up-
I'll bring up two points that will explain why I think I will vote against the, the, this allocation. The first one is just being mindful of the time and effort it took to get through the public safety complex, that being one of them. It took, that, that goes without saying how complex and, and the extent of that duration was, was mind-boggling, I guess, in my own perspective. The second item is the, just the condition of the building, some of those conditions that Mr. Malinowski just described. When you bear in mind the, the existing condition of that building with respect to the, there's mention of the, the alarm system and the roof and the windows, and anyone that gives that building a, a full, a full circle appreciates that the, the building envelope is, is, is in, in disrepair. And, and, and I think easel, easy to argue that it's beyond its useful life. For those reasons, and Mr. Malinowski might be able to, I guess, persuade me that this is, that there's a, there's another intent here. I don't understand why we're going to spend a million dollars studying this building. Why can't the, or, and this might be a matter of being able to make an amendment to the, or a motion to make an amendment to this article, to simply go into the design phase to, to essentially start the, the sequencing of being able to replace that building, be a full tear down and, and you replace it with a, a modern, new school, but it just seems like a, it, it seems to slow the process down maybe more than it needs to be. And secondly, perhaps a, a better use of funds would just to be, simply to move it forward right, right into a design phase. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Cook?
Kathy Cook. 11 Greystone Way, also a part of the advisory committee. So I want to go back to the gentleman, I think two before, that seemed to think the million dollars sounded higher than 950. Advisory did too. We were kind of shocked about the number, so we really pushed hard on that number, which is why the information that Mr. Malinowski provided, we got from the person who used to be the owner's project manager for the public safety building, who we knew well and trusted. So he helped us pull 15 recent school projects that were part of the MSBA program, showed us the feasibility study fees that were paid in those. We updated those to current dollars and then took the average. We took just a simple arithmetic average, and that's the mean, and that was $959,000. Then we looked at the median to see if there were tails that were skewing that number, and that was 909. So that gave us much more comfort that the number was real as far as what these studies cost. But keep in mind something that I'm not sure Jason totally emphasized. The MSBA program that we've been accepted into kicks off August 1st. So we don't think we've got to have a time to have a special town meeting before then. So we need, you know, this part needs to be done tonight, or we probably will not be working with the MSBA. So yeah, they're going to give us the money for the design, but more importantly, they're going to give us a really big construction grant to build whatever we decide to build, whether it's a rehab, new building, whatever. So we think that's about 20%. So that is what we want everybody to remember. If we vote no on this tonight, then we, we probably won't be part of that MSBA process. They might let us back in, but they've got lots of applications, they've got limited money, so we'd have to reapply and hope that they would look at this again. So a no vote means we probably won't get that reimbursement. We'd have to do it on our own. Advisory does think 950, it sounds like a high number, but we're convinced that it is the right number to do what we've got to do to present all options to town meeting as far as what we could do to end up with a viable school, set of school buildings going forward.
Thank you. We're over here.
Bill Harrington for Richards Road. I question the, the need to tear down a school and, and move to Cardville Hall. I would like to see Cardville Hall moved, used as a school. It is a school, it's a new school. It's only semi-appropriate to be a recreation center or whatever else. It's a split-level building, not really good for a senior center setup. But why do we tear down Neri and, and build a new Neri when we've got Card, we've got Woodward, which is a relatively new school? And why can't we move the kids into Woodward and then build an appropriately made building on the Neri site to be the new community center, the House of Recreation and the, and the senior center? The Cardville Hall is a, a split-level building, which just isn't appropriate, or not as appropriate as a senior center. So I would, I would suggest that we consider moving the kids to, to Woodward and taking the Neri site, which is a nice, flat, level area with outside accommodations for recreation and so forth, and make, make an appropriate building on the Neri site for the, for the community center in the future.
All right, thank you.
Can I respond to Mr. Harrington?
Yeah, before you do, I just want to make note. We're just a couple of minutes before 11:00. I got three people at the mics, and we got a response coming on that. We're obliged to continue until we finish Article 16. So, you know, we'll, we'll keep going and see where we are in a few minutes. All right, you want to respond to Mr. Harrington, I'll allow that, and then we'll go here, and then Mr. Hamilton, the gentleman, and then back over here. So one, two, three, four. Maybe that'll be it.
Yeah, so my simple response to Mr. Harrington is, based on my presentation, based on the numbers we have, Woodward can only accommodate two schools. We wouldn't be here tonight if Woodward-
Two grades.
Too great. Woodward cannot accommodate more than two grades. Therefore, we wouldn't be here tonight if Woodward was larger. We, we would have had a simple solution. And what Mr. Harrington is pointing out regarding potential senior center, that's not what we're here to discuss tonight. That we can only discuss once we know what schools are going to be available, what space is available, and if we are, even are going to consolidate. That is also a possible solution here that comes out of this study.
Couldn't, in addition, be put on Woodward at a lot less expense to accommodate additional students there?
While it hasn't been studied, it's a very tight lot that wouldn't produce much square footage, even though it's two stories. Because you have to maintain, I don't see the fire chief anymore, but you have to maintain the access roads around the building, too. You're not going to just be able to rip out access roads and put buildings there.
I would think it should be at least considered as an option.
So, so, so Bill, just remember that as part of this process, the superintendent was required by the MSBA to actually put in a statement of interest to the MSBA for the Woodward school as well, to study exactly that. That is part of all of this. That was a request they made on condition of us going into the eligibility period for Neri. So all of this is on the table.
So what you're saying is this new study will consider the possibility of going to Woodward rather than tearing down and rebuilding?
Everything is on the table. This particular funding is going to specifically drive what is possible on the Neri site, and then that will inform, I think, where we go from there with the other schools.
Thank you, Josh.
You're welcome.
All right, thank you. Ms. Hamilton.
Al Hamilton, 35 Pine Hill Road. I, I want to address the suggestion that we simply jump into the design phase, and I would remind people of the success we had with the senior center in Fayetteville. And you say, what senior center in Fayetteville? And about 18 or 20 years ago, we spent $400,000 doing exactly this. And we have sitting in our town hall beautiful plans for a senior center in Fayetteville, which cannot be supported by a septic system. And so we had to put those plans on the shelf, and this is the right approach to this question. Yes, it's going to be a lot of money. I don't like spending money, but yes, this is going to be a lot of money. And we, we need to have the building committee do its homework, which, by the way, I'm certain will involve a detailed septic analysis, because I know septic on that site is quite challenge, no, the septic on that site is quite challenging. And so this is money well-spent, and I don't usually say that.
Thank you. Okay, we'll go here, and then we'll come back over here, and that should be it. Oh, nope, we'll go one more. Yep. All right, so right here, sir.
Thank you. Eric Fernandez, 26 Oak Hill Road. Two very brief questions, which I think lead to, to my point in supporting this. So the question's been raised about $950,000 to be spent, and I'd like two points of clarification. One, we're proving up to that spend, but correct me if I'm wrong, we don't have to spend that money, and we're putting our faith in the members of that committee to, in a publicly open forum, transparently show us where that money is going and potentially hold it at any point. Secondly, the question was, to receive the 38% reimbursement, correct, we need to move into the next phase. Proving this puts us into that next phase. However, if for some reason we don't make it into that next phase for some other reason, we don't actually have to spend this money. Would that be correct? Or were those two things correct?
Yeah, so if, if there was a no vote tonight, the committee would have to revisit how we proceed and the appetite for a special town meeting before our window would expire with the MSBA.
So, so forgive me, I don't think I was clear enough. My point being, if we approve this, this evening, to, to spend up to $950,000, but for some reason we do not move into the next phase-
We don't spend a penny.
Based on the state, we don't spend a penny. But if we do move in to the next phase, we'll be reimbursed 38%, bringing the cost of this really down to that $500,000 mark, correct?
Just south of 600, yep.
Just south of 600.
That's correct.
So again, I, I think what we're really, there's a lot of concern about the number. It is a very high number. But again, I think my points in supporting this are that, one, it gives us a multitude of options, as had been laid out. It gives us the ability to make informed decisions about what we're going to do next. And that $950,000 is not the actual amount we're going to spend. We are either going to stop this process as we go through, because it stops making sense, or if we move into the next phase, working with the state, that number will really be south of 600,000. So I think that's the decision here. Do we want to try to move forward with the state to have options, to look at what we want to do for our schools and for our kids? Or do we want to put our hands up and make the decisions to move forward? Thank you.
Thank you. Over here.
I want to build on what he just said, because he basically said what I wanted to. But just to remind people, I think the vote tonight is more about proving to the state that we have the desire and the willingness to fix or build a new Neri because we need it, if in fact the feasibility study says that's what we need to do. Contrary to what's been said many times tonight, we're not spending a million dollars on a feasibility study, and it's unfortunate that warrant was worded that way. We are approving our intent to go forward all the way to construction documents with changes or a new school, if that's what our feasibility study comes back with, and as already stated, a future town meeting will have to approve, if, correct me if I'm wrong, that results of that study to say, yeah, we're, we're willing to do that, move forward, give us the construction documents. We've got several votes ahead of us. All we're really talking about spending today, nothing in this year, because it takes some time, but today, is just to do the study, which is nowhere near the million dollars. I don't know how much it is. But a million dollars to do all the way through construction documents, if in fact it is a $60 million school, or 50 million, or 4 million, million, is very reasonable. And by approving the intent tonight, we qualify for state reimbursement for that money and for the building. So it, that's really what the vote is about tonight. Do we want to take advantage of this program? We're not spending a million dollars tonight. We're simply saying we're willing to do that if we approve the results of the feasibility study. Is, is anything I said incorrect, or is that?
No, that's all correct. The one thing I'll add is it's also going to require a ballot vote for any future construction, because there's no way this would fit in the levy.
There you go. Okay, thank you.
All right, we're over here, and sir, I'm going to ask when I come back if you've got something new that we haven't heard already on this, but let's go to the, to this aisle, please.
Hi, I'm Kathy Reed, 34 Bigelow Road. I've heard a lot more about what's actually in the article, but what also is something that impacts how I'm going to vote is, which hasn't been mentioned as much, is our qualification for getting actual money for the construction piece of it. Because there was a little bit of alluding to 20% or, or something like that. What, what are the chances that we would get that money then? And kind of what's the, the pro, what's the kind of-
If we continue through the MSBA process to an actual, whether it be renovation, repairs, or new construction, our current reimbursement rate is 38%. However, there are ineligible expenses when you get into that phase that don't count. The simplest example I can give is the state doesn't give you a penny to build an auditorium. Maybe we, as a town, decide we need another auditorium. Again, something town meeting can decide. That's where the 20%, I believe Ms. Cook mentioned it. So based on everything we know, we believe there's about a, a takeoff about 18% to get us down to 20% reimbursement and any future construction that we undertake on that building.
So the 38% is not just for the feasibility study, it carries over with-
Carries forward, and there's other incentives that continue to increase related to green incentives, et cetera, as well.
Okay, great, thank you.
All right, thank you. Something new and, and possibly brief?
18 Main Street. One of them was, if the 950 didn't go through, what does that affect the taxes? Do they go down for this year, or is it unchanged? I'm assuming it would go down.
So FY '23 is not impacted. There's nothing in the budget that was passed tonight for FY '23. The expectation it would be bonded. The bonding authority rests solely with the treasurer of when he does that and when he needs the money. Usually we've tended to do short-term bonds and long-term, but it's Brian's call on that. When you look ahead, though, we have decreasing debt. We have a significant amount of debt that actually comes off the books in the next two to three years, which is where this would line up. So there would be a discussion before the bond was actually taken on of what the tax impact would be. That would happen at the select board level. So the expectation is, on a gross perspective, of course, this is going to add to our taxes. The net impact, if you kind of play it all the way through, not knowing what other bondable projects are going to come down the pike at the FY '24 meeting, is, you know, the net cost should not be significant.
Okay. And my second question was, correct me if I'm wrong, but is there two paths to this? There's one that we go through the MSBA, we fund the 950 number today, and that is the nine, the MSBA. The other option would be the town would take this on themselves. So if we would take this on ourselves, we theoretically would save, or spend four to five million more over what the MSBA would reimburse at, at the long, the full long-term project after you take inflation into account. Can you just kind of maybe clarify a little bit about what the two different paths are if we would say no to the 950 tonight, and what the town would do as a result of maybe wanting to pursue this project in the future?
So if we say no tonight, there's a few paths that could happen. Path one is we could come back to a future town meeting with a similar warrant article or something different that involves the MSBA. We could also have a discussion of coming out of the MSBA process and trying to do this on our own. I candidly, sitting up here, have heard a wide variety of ideas. Some want to go into design, some want to do study. Again, healthy debate. So I would think there is two discussions. One, do we continue with the MSBA and do they want us? Or two, do we move on from the MSBA process and try to do this on our own, which would go at our own pace, which is likely faster than what the MSBA process will be? But we are, the numbers you're quoting are assuming new construction. I, I don't know that it's healthy to talk about any sort of new construction until the right analysis has been done.
Thank you.
All right, last but not least here.
Marguerite Landry, 134 Deerfoot. I'd like to call the question.
Okay, motion's been made to move the question, as we did previously. This motion cuts off all debate. It means we're done talking. It requires a two-thirds vote. If it passes, then we move immediately to a vote on the article on the floor. Sir, I'm going to ask you if you can do a minute or less, and I'll forestall that motion for, for that.
Yes, sir.
Go right ahead.
I'll just close with a comment, trying to just add to what Mr. Hamilton mentioned and what I followed as, as far as the, the money goes, is that if, if we're looking at a million dollars, what I gleaned from that discussed- what I gleaned from that discussion is there's enough funding there to not only cover the feasibility, excuse me, the feasibility study, but also some design scope. I'd like to make a motion to amend that article to add three words, and that's after feasibility study, add "and preliminary" design. And the concept there, in good faith, that that committee is spending that million dollars and able to accomplish more than a study. Thank you.
Point of order. I've moved the question, and there's no room for amendments.
And you know what? I'm going to rule the motion to amend out of order. I did it out of courtesy, and it's, you know, we're going to, truthfully, I had the discretion to forestall Ms. Landry's motion, just to get that one last comment in. But I'm going to allow the motion to move the previous question at this point. Requires a two-thirds vote. If you're interested in amendment that was just about to be proposed, then we can defeat this motion. But, you know, at this point, I will take the vote. So, all those in favor of the motion to move the question, raise your cards. Thank you. All opposed? I declare a two-thirds majority. So, now we are back to the original motion from Mr. Malinowski. It also requires a two-thirds majority because it is a borrowing article. So, all those in favor of his motion to borrow this money, please raise your cards. Thank you. All opposed? Okay. Listen, I, so the motion, Article 16 carries, I have great respect and admiration for your time and attention tonight. It was tough. Do I have a motion to adjourn until tomorrow at 6:30 PM, right here? And second, all in favor? See you tomorrow. More to come.